Yes, we are.
Great. Hello, testing. Good evening, everyone. There we go. Welcome to the August 26, 2025 meeting of the Almarle County Planning Commission. I'll read this. The public can access and participate in the meeting through information posted on the Almarle County website, specifically on the Planning Commission homepage and the Almarle County calendar. During the meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment on specific agenda items where input is invited. So I'll begin by calling us to order and establishing a quorum. Could you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Here.
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
I have Mr. Bivins and Mr. Moore out and Mr. Clayburn is on his way. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So we do have a quorum. We are good to go. Let me first begin by asking, is there a public comment on matters pending before the commission but not listed on this agenda? Being none, is there anyone online?
No, sir.
All right. We will move on to our third item of business, the consent agenda on the next chief. Consent agenda includes the approval of draft meeting minutes July 8, 2025. Do we hear a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Karazana?
Aye.
And Ms. Firehawk?
Yep.
Thank you.
Great. And then we are now into the meat of the schedule.
Mr. Clayburn's just arrived.
Mr. Clayburn has arrived. Good to see you, Corey. And we will begin with the work session CCP 2021-2 AC44 Comp Plan Final Draft Document. And I guess I'll call attention to that number CCP 2021-2. This is in 2021 that we've, you, we all began this, this effort. So congratulations on getting us this far and looking forward to conversation tonight. I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commissions. Good to be here today. Ben Holt, Long Range Planning Division. I'll be presenting on our draft document this evening. So just to look at what we're going to be covering tonight, I'll do a very brief phase recap of what we did in the previous phases to get to this point. We'll talk about what this new phase four entails. We'll take a look at the upcoming schedule. We'll talk about the draft document and some notable updates, and then we'll have a little discussion about the tracking and reporting, followed by questions for your feedback. So just the preview of these questions to kick off our discussion, this slide is again at the end of the presentation. But the, how we're going to kind of tee this up is what do we get right in this draft plan document? And then your feedback on what may be missing or what needs addition or update. So to look at these previous project phases, beginning with phase one, as noted, in 2021 is when we officially kicked off. So that phase one included our framework. And within that framework, we established our guiding principles to define what type of community we'd like to be over the next 20 years. And those guiding principles provide direction for the plan as a whole, and then for ultimately for the implementation actions and objectives. So also during phase one, we took a look at our growth management policy, and that entailed the 2022 build out analysis to establish a baseline for growth capacity within our existing development areas, and also to provide guidance for future decisions related to our development areas. We also identified some land use topics that needed further consideration or guidance, such as rural interstate interchanges, crossroads, communities, and rural area uses. And then in phase two, we drafted the goals and objectives for each topic chapter. And we also focused on our planning toolkits, which was a way to coordinate land use and transportation planning, which most notably produced our activity centers. In phase three, we drafted the actions to support the goals and objectives within each topic chapter. And we also created implementation strategies, and we developed those big moves to prioritize plan recommendations and to guide resource allocation. And that brings us to our current phase four with a focus on final plan document. So I'll provide a few more details about this phase in later slides. So I thought it would be helpful to touch on phase three and then talk about what preceded this draft document that we now have. So in phase three, we drafted those actions to support the goals and objectives within the topic chapters. So each topic chapter was previewed at work session with you all and the board of supervisors, and that took place from late 2024 through June of this year. And then in July, we drafted that implementation chapter and the big moves within that chapter. As far as public engagement, we presented all these topic chapters either at an open house event or virtual meetings. And so that brings us to phase four. So this final phase of the project, we've now published a complete draft document of the comprehensive plan. So that can be reviewed by the public, by the planning commission and board for input. And that input will be used to update and finalize the plan document to be followed by plan adoption. So regarding the engagement to date for this phase, we've, we've published that draft plan document on the AC44 website. At last check, we've had over 400 visits to this phase four webpage. And we've had approximately 100 or more downloads for parts one, two, and three of the plan. And this new webpage includes a feedback tool to gauge participants' comfort level with the plan. And we also have a comment tool so folks can share input and, and make suggestions. And this feedback tool on the website will remain open from now until September 5. I'd also like to note, in terms of engagement for this phase, we held our final public open house event last Thursday to share this draft plan document with the public. And we had approximately 30 attendees, which included both in person and online participants. At the meeting, we presented this planned content, and we had staff available to answer questions about the various chapters. We previewed that feedback tool that's on the website. We shared flyers with QR codes that connect to the website so people can spread the word and know how to access this plan document. We received a range of comments, and that included topics such as transit, development areas expansion, transitional density housing, public schools, and childcare. Looking at our phase four schedule, public input again will be received online through September 5 on the website. And then our work sessions to review the draft content of the plan are today with you all and with the board on September 10. And I'd also like to note that in between, we'll have a meeting with the board on September 3, where we'll present our updated build out analysis, and that will be incorporated within the comprehensive plan as well. So following these work sessions to review the draft plan, we will present the updated and final version of the plan at public hearings with the commission on September 23 and with the board on October 15, which is our projected adoption date. So to touch on the notable edits or additions to the plan document, we've added a seventh big move that focuses on social connection and building a sense of community. Within the growth management chapter, we've added content to our development areas utilization review and the criteria for evaluating our development area boundaries. Within the rural areas chapter, we've added content about supporting agriculture and forestry uses, which includes distribution and aggregation facilities. The thriving economy chapter has been updated to align with the current economic development strategic plan that's underway, and it incorporates language supporting our local agricultural economy and updating that list of target industries. For cultural resources, we incorporated board feedbacks related to actions that involved incentives and potential funding, as well as identifying cultural resources. And with the community facilities chapter, since it was one of the longer chapters, the content has been consolidated and shortened within that chapter, especially within the narrative portion. And the transportation chapter includes additional content related to recreation on rural roads. Regarding tracking and reporting, we will be incorporating metrics with a priority placed on monitoring trends and patterns associated with those big moves. Example metrics could include population growth and where it occurs, tracking affordable housing units, both preserved and new, tracking cost burden households. The metrics and tracking will be incorporated within scorecards that will be included as part of staff reviews for individual applications, and also within our regularly scheduled reporting, which will likely be conducted on an annual basis. And so that brings us to our discussion topics, and you can, you all can address these in whatever order you wish. But again, what do we get right? And then some additional feedback on what might be missing or needs, needs updating. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So just to kick us off, I think, since this is a work session, and to reiterate a little bit of what we have on the screen, you know, I know you all know this. We've been through the detail. We've looked at the objectives. We've looked at the goals. We've, we've been a part of public hearings and conversations related to this. So the way I was thinking about tonight is a way to basically facilitate us being able to get through this material, which is quite a lot, and also sort of thinking about ways that we can identify strengths, gaps, and priorities. So maybe thinking about those, that sort of fits with, I think, what you're asking for here. If I would suggest, if there are grammatical things, if there are typos, if there are, you know, those types of things that we take that offline and we can share those. And I know Commissioner Firehawk's already done that. I think I've done a little bit too. We can, we can share, or we can do that sort of offline and, and be a little bit more constructive with our time today.
Chairman Missile, can I just ask staff a quick logistical question?
Yeah, of course.
So I tried to share the edits that I made to the document, but it said, staff cannot open links. The document is so large that it only shows up as a link. And I think, I don't know if the county has instituted new security procedures because of our terrible summer of whatever you want to call it. So were you able to get it and open it? I just sent it to Ben, so he doesn't have it already. But it's, I got this message saying, the recipients will not be able to open a link.
Oh, this is the PDF that you had in your email?
It's a PD, you know, the comp plan is a PDF and it's very large. So I edit it, then I try to send it.
Yeah, my, my take is it's likely due to the file size. There is a cap, I believe, on the files that we can share by email. So we'll have to.
I think I, yeah.
Okay. Maybe it's like Ben's email that.
It's back.
It's interesting. I went to share it with somebody else today, James Wilkinson, our new staff member. And it wouldn't let me share that. So it may be the permission settings or something, but we did get a copy.
Okay. Somebody has it. All right. That's, I just wanted to know, because like, I don't, I, as I said, I don't plan to sit here and be like, this word is wrong.
Okay.
Okay.
And let me just take, take one more stab at the editing stuff. I mean, you know, it's a big document, all written in-house. We've got, not only writing the document, bearing staff reports. I'm not trying to apologize. I'm just trying to explain. There's a lot of stuff going on. We actually have another version right now that we're going through and passing around the hardline version to make sure we get all of those edits. You know, it's much easier sometimes to read something as a paper, maybe conditioned that way as opposed to online. So we recognize that there are still some grammatical stuff in it. We're cleaning that up.
Yeah, there, and there are.
And appreciate, and appreciate what you've provided to us.
I don't, I don't want to take any more time. We can talk, we can return to this topic, but I don't want to interrupt anymore.
I just wanted to, to highlight one of the points that you made in your email, which I was going to write a similar one. I tell you, I need to keep piling on this. But so your suggestion about an editor, somebody coming in from the outside. So we do that at UVA every, you know, every now and then we'll bring in someone. It, it's particularly people that have, and maybe you have it in staff. I mean, some, sometimes you have a particular staff person that has a keen eye. But it's also the, 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 the language. There's so many voices, but there's so many voices in the document. And so that's one of the things that I, as I read through this whole draft, you do, so just cleaning that up, it's all in the appropriate passport. And so getting somebody might help from the outside. So I think that's a recommendation you made, and I, I would second that.
They did just hire a planner whose career was as an editor.
Right. So if you have somebody else, that's even better.
I'll tell you, I don't know what his job.
Particularly they have been involved with the process, so they have some separation.
Meet James.
Your head over there. That's the, that's the mystery editor.
So I think that would be, that would be much better than us starting to send you typos or.
Thank you.
I think that's.
And again, you know, what, I don't know, I'm not fully apologizing, but you know, you ask staff to write a document. It's a lot of communities that have a consultant doing. We've been doing all, we've been, it's been a three ring circus for this team. And I, I really want to like give them five ring circus for this team. You can imagine all the different ways we get pulled. So appreciate some of those issues with the editing aspect of it. You know, we pulled the document together. We intend to do another pusher.
No, I appreciate that. It's not going to prevent us from sharing our comments.
Yeah, well, I think. Barn. We'll, we'll gladly accept.
Yeah, no, understood. Thanks. Any set of eyes.
Another sort of general overarching editing thing, but I can wait on it.
Why don't we wait on that? Well, actually, why don't we do that? Why don't we talk about sort of overarching editing things if we can focus on that?
So in my edits, I did flag out some ones where I said, I don't know what this objective is saying. Like, what is it saying? I don't understand it. And if I don't understand it, and I'm kind of on the inside a bit, and I'm trying to imagine a member of the public trying to understand what it's the county saying it's doing. So what I'd like you all to do as you do this internal look is to ask yourself, if you read this sentence, would you know, for number one, know what it's saying, but number two, could you tell if you did that thing? There, it was a little, I'm just, don't take this the wrong way. I'm just being a little bit jokey, but in some way in my head, it reminded me of Mad Libs. Now I'm dating myself. But it's like sustainability, equity, like just grabbing these words, and sometimes some of those things turn two words out. And understanding everyone on staff is not a professional writer. And it's hard to, to, it's hard for anyone to write these things, even if you are a professional writer. So just if you did that kind of test on each one, do I know what this is saying? And would I be able to tell if I did it?
No.
If you can't answer that question, take it back to the staff who wrote it or ask the staff what they were trying to say. Because I'm not saying it's not a good one, maybe, but I just can't tell what is it actually saying?
Yeah, I think, I think that if I can piggyback on that a little bit, you know, having, as many of us have been part of the original, the, the last comprehensive plan and working through rezonings and neighborhoods and all those kinds of things. One thing that does strike me as an applicant is that this is much clearer in my mind in terms of it's the way it's laid out and the way it's structured. And I preach to the choir. I know, I, I feel like sometimes we get our heads into this as planners. And, and your point is well taken in that we need to pull back as applicants, as people who don't, who aren't in this every day, right? So having that set of eyeglasses and just checking through that, I think is, is helpful.
Yeah.
Any other just general, big picture comments, not specific?
Yeah. So did you want to have anything first?
I, I do have things, but.
Okay, you can go first.
In general, I think the, the layout, like graphically, I think it, it works. I'll give a couple of thoughts, and you can take them as you wish. I'm sure you're getting a lot of thoughts. But for the pictures, there was moments where I thought it would have been nice if there was just somewhere that says what this is, like specifically, right? Like sometimes it says it'll say Dartinto Park. And there's other times where it's just a picture of random structures that I know they're part of our community. But it might be nice if, you know, at the bottom of the page, you know, there's an asterisk that says, okay, top right was, you know, I don't know, grit at Pantops or whatever, right? Just to show where it is in our community. So that's just kind of high level. And then the other thing that jumped out was just the colors. And this is me as an architect, right? Everything has to mean something. And so as I look through, there's different color text for captions, different color text for headings, different text sizes and so forth. So I would say if you use color, just make sure it means something, right? Like, we use this color only for chapter two for this reason, and chapter three is for this reason. Or just something that stood out to me is from a presentation standpoint, but again, nitpicky, that doesn't change the content. It's just more graphical professional appearance. So.
Corey, can I tag on to that too? Along those lines, like, you know, with maps, there's the standard colors that we use for various things. So we had a map of scenic roads, but the roads were blue and normally, normally in a road, a river is usually blue. So it's talking about scenic roads and rivers in the paragraph. And then there's a map with all these blue lines, which your brain goes, oh, that must be the rivers, but it's the roads. So that color choice is easily fixed. And then there's no like, on all maps, like you should have like 64, 29, some kind of road that people have for orientation in their brain. Anyway, there are just things like that, like choice of map colors, map keys, take, maybe take another pass at that.
Lonnie, did you have Commissioner Murray?
Yeah, there's, one of the things that struck me is particularly some of the newer additions, there's a lot of tentative language, like maybe, perhaps, you know, and, and I think that either we should, we should be more definitive in our language. And if we can't be definitive, we should really question the inclusion of that language, that those statements at all.
Yeah.
Because it's just, you know, I mean, I much prefer things like evidence suggests, or even better, the report that was from such and such date, you know, reference here, you know. So I mean, I think, I, I think we do ourselves a disservice when we include a lot of, you know, maybe, perhaps, you know, might.
Yeah.
All right, any other?
A lot of places I saw that.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I hear you. I think in some places there are kind of aspirational goals. So I don't, I don't know. I'd have to see that personally. I'd have to see the context to know whether we should take them out, even though it just says we should try this. I think there's room for some aspiration.
Oh, yeah. I think, I think aspiration is fine. I think that there was, there was some predicting of things that were, you know, or like statement. I'll get to some of that language later when I quote specific sections, sections that I think need some work.
Right.
But, but I think in general, just, you know, so we're talking at a very general level right now. I think there's some, some wishy washy.
I'll give, I'll give you an example, and I, I'm not going to say this exactly right, but in the historic preservation chapter, there, it talks about communities that are certified historic. They, I can't remember what the classification was like.
Certified local government?
Yeah, for historic preservation. And then it lists all of those. And then, but when you get to the, so it seems to make a strong case, like we should pursue this. And I'm like, yeah. And then when I get to the objective, it's like, we should consider maybe investigating some, you know, like it's.
Softens.
Why can't we just say we want to do that? Let's do it. That, let's say that's, these are all goals, right? Let's make one of them to become certified.
Yeah.
Instead of might consider investigate potentially something.
Yeah, I have a.
I know, like, we're not like writing law here. I get that.
I'll, I'll just respond to say, in that particular instance, it was board direction.
Yeah.
We were responding to.
Direction. They can disagree.
They trump. But I think on that, I think on that general subject, there probably are some areas where the, and maybe all the, maybe every one of them was directed by the board, but there's some areas where I think, like metrics, for example, where we're not being specific. And I was going to get into that a little bit later too. Why don't we start with part one? You guys are okay with that? And just in general, I have a, just a general question for staff to kind of kick us off. How did you foresee constituents, general public, folks who are looking at the comprehensive plan? How did you foresee them using part one? And what was the primary benefit of part one in your minds?
Sure. Are you talking about the structure of the plan document and how, how that informs the reader?
Yeah, I'm talking about, right, the plan policy, we're start.
Yeah.
Talks with the navigating the plan overview, comp plan process, connection to other county plans, county strategic plan, those.
Right, right. And, yeah.
I know what I would use it for.
Right. And our intention was to provide some history and context, and also some understanding for folks who are maybe used or new to the concept of a comprehensive plan, why we need it, what it's intended to accomplish, and then, hey, here's our plan. Here's how it's structured. Here's how it's applied. So hopefully it's easier to navigate. And just as a small side note, I wanted to add that we intend to have a PDF where the table of contents has active links that will jump to other parts of the document. And that'll be easier to finalize once the document is finalized.
That's great. That was kind of what I first saw. And actually, reading through that, I thought was really cool. It was kind of like a history of Almarle County's planning. It goes back to the eighties. The, yeah, the, the three party agreement connects it to the university, connects it to the city. I thought that it was a really, a really well-written and helpful chapter. The one thing that, while I'm talking, the one thing that popped out to me, and maybe it's in the right location, it just ending with guiding principles seemed a little odd. You all think.
Yeah. And it doesn't actually tie to what's just above it.
Yeah.
Either. So. The question I had as well.
Is it trying to tee up the rest of it, though? That's what I thought was.
Well, it might be, but then again, do you want this chapter?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, then you're like, okay, and then where's the?
Do you ever want it to be standalone, number one? So maybe it should have a conclusion or some sort of an overview or some kind of a summary. But it just felt like it, it ended abruptly and maybe awkwardly.
It's basically that one page, page 33, right? I think it's 33.
Yep.
It, it just seems like you at least want to, if you want to have ending with the guiding principles, that's fine. But it seems like you want to at least introduce the reader on what are the principles that are guiding this document?
Right.
From the beginnings, and that this is the lens that we are taking.
And now here's some history.
Yeah. I had actually flagged the entire table of contents in its order. Like, I felt like overview might be number one, and then guiding principles and equity and climate lens felt like that followed after. I mean, you could probably debate or argue how all of that stuff falls. I felt like you'd want to kind of set the stage and then kind of work your way. So maybe go from macro to micro. So that was the one thing I thought guiding principle was so important, since it guides the whole document. I was like, why is that not part of the overview? Like setting the stage and the climate and equity lens that we hope infiltrates all nine chapters as you continue to read on. And then everything else kind of seems to be inferior to that. That's the way I originally read it, but.
Is there something in that first section that we didn't cover?
I think all the puzzle pieces are there. It's the question is, is it in the right order? That's.
Appreciate what that's coming. And that's, I thought I'd ask that one question. It's like, okay, we, we're thinking about the puzzle pieces, to use your terms, good one. If the puzzle pieces are there, and it's a, it's a batting order type of thing, where we're trying to get some of that macro to micro. Okay, we got that.
You know, I agree. I mean, I know the history pretty well, but even for myself, I was like, oh yeah, that's right. And then, oh yeah. And so I thought it was a good layout to bring somebody up to speed who wasn't hanging around Almarle County, you know, paying attention to planning.
Yeah. And I agree. I think the puzzle pieces are all there, to use your term. My, my, and the question of anything missing? Again, getting back to is there a concluding section or a summary, or here we go? Like here's, this is just part one. We're going to summarize part one. This is what we covered briefly. And then we springboard out. And then the other piece of it is, and this is kind of implied, I think, by what you were saying, or just reinforcing what you were saying, is that items like community engagement were so important to this document. And it's, I still hear today, people complaining that there wasn't enough community input and there weren't enough opportunities. And then I see that 30 people out of 120,000 show up for a certain, you know, and not to critique our constituents, but the opportunities are there. I would say that upfront, right? And then the last thing is, I know when you guys did this, you were striving for excellence. And you looked at benchmarking other communities, and you said, how can we be leaders with this document, right? So think about where you sell your, sell that at the beginning. This is why this is such a great document, right? These are the things that maybe make us stand out. These are the things that maybe make us stand out or differentiate us from other communities. Not in a bragging kind of way, but just kind of a, maybe a little brag.
Can I, can I?
Yeah.
Jump into that a little bit, because one of the, it's a history of Albemarle.
Yeah.
I think what Fred just mentioned. So what is distinctive about Albemarle? Some of that it comes from the history. And, and yes, the things that are put, that are, that are talked about in that section. Obviously it's a brief section because the whole, it's, the whole thing is, is, is your, your brief introduction, right? However, it doesn't really talk about what's unique. In fact, the two things that are mentioned that really is talked about, uh, which are not positive, are, are also true about a lot of communities. They're not specific. Those things weren't just, those policies were not really just happening here in Albemarle County. But that's really what the focus on was there. And so I didn't quite understand that. And I think it, it, there's an opportunity to talk about the uniqueness and why are we making some of the decisions that we're making that are driven by, by the history, the location? So you might want to take a look at that section because I, personally, I don't think you walk away with understanding any history of Albemarle. You understand history on, on, uh, unequitable practices in, in land use, uh, and policies that were made. But again, that was made not just in Albemarle. So it's not unique to Albemarle, unfortunately.
I feel like I should say something on that too. I mean, I think one of the things that sets us apart from Charlottesville, for example, or some other local communities, is that the big nineteen eighty rezoning, which was, was not done, you know, based upon, you know, racial lines or, you know, other things, but it was done based around water. And so that fact that the water played this huge role in, you know, really shaping this massive rezoning that is the layout of what we have now, um, really sets us apart from some other communities.
And I'll just want to tag on that. I, like I, when I, I, I go to other places, I go to lots of other counties and work with them. And, and oftentimes people say, oh, you, you're an Albemarle. Like we have a great reputation for, uh, trying to plan for growth in a way that protects our rural areas. We are not like suburban sprawl land like some other counties. We've worked really hard to do, to, to get to where we are. And it's not perfect, of course not. You know, and there's like legacy zoning of the past and various things we are trying to overcome. But, but we've worked so hard and all this debate about, don't expand the development area. And like frankly, no one, I haven't heard anyone up here say, just expand the development area, just for the record. But, um, we've done a good job. And it does talk about that in place, like, you know, we, we changed our policy and there was less development in the rural area and starting to see the growth we wanted to see in the urban area. And there's, now there's a bit more trickling back to the rural area, but we're, we're kind of holding the line. But our strong land policies are why we are different. And that's why we have this beautiful countryside that we can still protect. So I don't know, maybe make a stronger case for, we have that reputation in Virginia. So why not say that upfront? And then this, this plan continues that legacy and continues that trajectory.
Yeah. Good. I was gonna piggyback off that.
Go ahead. I was just, I, I was gonna say, there are some of the points that you guys are making. I'm just looking at a paragraph here talking about nineteen eighty and the conference rezoning and basing the water supply, page twenty-two. So we, we sort of did hit on some of those things. Um, so, uh, and I appreciate your comment about, uh, sort of the racial disparity stuff that was not only unique to our county, but other places. So can we? Are we meeting the intent that you all are, are, are asking us by, um, emphasizing some of the elements in here a little bit stronger that make us stand apart?
Bolder and make, be, be bolder at the beginning.
Here's a simple, here's a.
Then you can give the history.
Here's a simple move that might make sense. And I'm not saying this is the, and this is you, you, this was your idea. So if you read the beginning of this, navigating the plan, AC forty-four is a policy guide for county staff and officials and a resource for community members. The plan articulates our community vision for the future and steps we may need to take to implement that vision. That's how you open versus many attributes define Albemarle's unique character and continue to make it a desirable place to live, work and play. Our nationally recognized historic landmarks, university, scenic beauty, natural environments and local. That first upfront seems to me to be the grabber. Like this is why we're unique. This is our different, these are our differentiators and why we're special. And then you move into narrow navigate the plan. And then you move into the comprehensive plan process. So maybe it's as simple as thinking about maybe shuffling that order a little bit. Like we were talking about that kind of kid of parts being.
Yeah, yeah, I like that. And that's a great perspective. I'll also, you could just add a section, one of the puzzle pieces could be who we are, or you can call it what you want. It makes it sound like it's a tension grabbing, right? Um, but who we are and starts to talk about some of that special stuff. You could talk about demographics, right? I don't see that in here, right? Our county consists of X, Y and Z. And here are the economic drivers and, uh, we're an aging community versus not, right? Just those kinds of things that help justify some of the decisions that were made and developing the documents. So it could be just a section that's who we are and what's special about us, so. Yeah, and I think what Fred just mentioned, um, you can start with a bolder statement that it, and, and again, I think this also ties to the guiding principle, right? Because of where we are, who we are, um, this is what we're trying to do here. And you just lay out the guiding principles. So I think that's why they, they need to be there. You could still have that graph, graphic in page thirty-three. So reminding everybody again, here they are. But at least you, you bring him up in, in that context of a, a bolder statement. I do think the history should reflect some of that as well. And again, right now, it's, it's not, it's important to bring up the items that you bring up. It's just that it, to me, it seems like that really is all that you highlight. When I read that, that's where you walk away with is like, that's really, it's, I'm, I'm glad we don't have those policies again. But again, Albemarle was not the only one.
Yeah.
Right? So it, it, it's not a differentiator. It's not a, again, unfortunately, but it, it, it's, it's part of our history. And we, we can certainly, but it doesn't really talk about the history of Albemarle.
Yeah. And I think some of these policies played out very differently in Albemarle as well, because you know, a lot of places, you know, you dealt with sort of the issue of white flight, right? You had African-American communities that were urban. Well, you know, what the, sort of, you know, you had an urban situation. And as African-Americans moved into those, then you had, you know, white people that sort of fled those areas out to the suburbs. That was not the, the case in Albemarle County because there was no urban area to flee. But we may have been the recipient of white flight, right? So that was a thing that happened. And meanwhile, there's no, there's still no real mention in the comprehensive plan of these areas in Albemarle County that were the first people were, first places where slaves were allowed to settle. And that's still a defining trait of the, the rural areas, these communities, um, where you have African-Americans. And a lot of these, a lot of these were displaced by white flight. So it's a very different dynamic than what happened in, you know, a lot of urban areas. But that's not really accounted for in here and just described.
Well, you guys have given us a lot to think about and, um, we will try and recraft this chapter to, to address that. I think, I, I mean, for me, honestly, it's like my favorite chapter. I mean, I think the rest of them are.
It is good.
You think we're gonna get that much worse as we move forward? They're all important, but I just, it's just such, it's just still like, this is the great place to live and plan and work and build and, you know?
So I, I think part of it and, and spent a lot of time in the, in, 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 in the information that's in the other chapters. A lot of that really hasn't, I mean, you guys have changed it and you, you've obviously heard the comments and.
Yeah, I saw it, and yeah. Yeah, I saw our, our comments in.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I saw them go up.
So you've been responsive to our comments, the board supervisors' comments and so forth. And they're there. And so you can go through it and it's kind of like the nitty gritty of it. This is really the first time that we see this intro chapter.
Fair enough.
Okay. Sent to us. So I take it, you know, we're, we're, it's not that we're being critical. It's really the first time. And, and it is an important chapter because this is the, this is a segue into the comprehensive plan.
No, I, please, I don't take it critically at all. I think good constructive things. So thank you for your input.
Or I'll start off by saying, this is very good. So just want to emphasize that for the record. I always get nervous when I see a long list of names here. Cause I'm like, who did we forget? And so this double, triple, quadruple, sync topple, checking that everybody who's listed here is supposed to be here, right? So one person I like to see added under planning commission would be our secretary, Carolyn. Madam Secretary, is there any outside agency partners that not listed that should be, you know? UVA is supposed to be on there? I don't know. Just throwing it out there, but I, I always get super nervous when I see this. So, um, yeah, cause once it's printed, you know, turn it back. So just ask yourself, are you sure I want to do this? Maybe that's the question. Am I sure that I want to do this? So I'll, I'll leave that there. And then on page, trying to find my notes here. It's where we started to list out, oh, here we go, on page twelve. This might be part of my ignorance, so just correct me if I'm wrong. But it says we have six area plans exist covering sections of the counties designated development areas. And it goes on a list, five bullets. So is one of those areas having two plans or did we forget a bullet there? So the bottom right of page twelve.
We consider, um, Rio twenty-nine small area plan as being part of place, the places twenty-nine plan.
Okay, so that's number six.
That's why we say six.
Got it. All right, thanks. I think that's all I had for this section. That was the thing, but yeah. So in page twenty-three, I, I actually find this really helpful that it was, uh, others made the comment. So just where you outline the comp plans. First of all, I think it'll be helpful to have a heading on this, on this graphic, right? Just some kind of title on it. Uh, even though you have some description down below, but, uh, it's actually more of a disclaimer down below than, than anything else. So it would be some kind of heading for it would be helpful. And then I wonder if there's some takeaways that you may want to add here, because as I see it, I mean, there's been some shift. And then of course, there's, there's AC forty-four. And AC forty-four in particular, I mean, one of the things that we're trying to, to really do is increase density in our, uh, in our, in our development area, right? Where you can see that the density have actually kind of gone back and forth, but they haven't been very high. Even in twenty fifteen, we're talking about, you know, less than ten percent of, you know, the, the, the high density residential. Well, that's part of the issue that we have now, right? So that we're trying to, so I wonder if there's some takeaways that you may want to include here for AC forty-four. You know, with AP forty-four, we're targeting certain things. And again, to build on those guiding principles. So that, so this is a, a kind of, uh, um, a way that we're responding in a tangible way to the guiding principles and linking it back to past, um, plans. So I, I actually found this very interesting, just kind of reading it through it. And in some cases, there hasn't, the needle really hasn't moved too much. And a few of them they have, but not in others. And we are trying to move that needle now. And so I think it's an opportunity to, to, to highlight that.
Actually a good springboard to the next part of the document, which is recent trends. And were you suggesting, maybe not, but that we add a line that says?
I mean, you could, I kind of went, in my mind, I kind of want to went back and forth on that. Do we want to? Because obviously this, this is, you can measure what's, you know, where they had this. I'm not sure that you have. Maybe you do. I don't know that you have this quantified as, as what are we anticipating with AC forty-four? If you do, it would be great. But if you don't, at least some takeaways or here's how AC forty-four is.
Different. It's different to be different or, or this is the same and that's okay, or the less of this or.
Well, part of it is a timeline question, I guess. So in nineteen ninety-six, it says residential approximately one to two units per air. It says zero percent. Sorry, is that, is that debt, that's land dedicated to each category? I'm just wondering why that's zero percent. But I guess my point is, is, is that a snapshot in time? Or is that a trend between eighty-nine and ninety-six? Or, you know, so if you do put an AC forty-four, like you're saying.
I think this is where the heading goes. The way I read it, maybe I, maybe I read this wrong, but the way I read it is this is kind of like land use allocations.
Right.
You know, within these plans. So, so this is how the plans were allocating land use zoning. I mean, is that?
Well, I didn't, I didn't understand that. I thought it was how it was at the time of the plan or something.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess it isn't clear.
What is that? What's that be? I mean, there'd be clarification. This, this is what each plan broke its land use designations down as, right?
In the map, according to the. Future land use map said.
The flum, the flum distributed into the following categories.
Okay. And then, yeah, that, then it would be interesting to know. And then what? Like the, that's a, a map, but it's not a map of, it's a future map. So it's not a map of what existed.
Right, right. It's not necessarily, the way I read it was that this is the intended land use.
Right.
How it wound up, it's a different story, right? I mean, we know that, that in twenty fifteen, we haven't achieved some of the densities, uh, where we're fifty percent of, of the densities that we should have been. But so, so, so again, that.
It wanted this, right? And then what is this plan?
Right. What does this plan want? And I think that then, uh, talks to the point that we've been hammering on since the very beginning of this for three years plus is the, the measurables.
Yeah.
Right? So how do we measure?
Yeah.
Along the way so that we either, you know, we course correct because we're not hitting our targets. Um, so I, I think that's an important piece that can tie to. I think this is actually can be a very powerful and, and important, uh.
Yeah. You know, just double checking with them. So what this is, is for each of those land use maps, future land use maps for those plans, the area in those maps equated to that distribution of land. It doesn't obviously reflect what was in, on actual physical par, properties at that time. So I'm giving vacant, you know? So I think that's about what this table can take us to. As far as the trend line of whether or not on the parcels in our community, which we were headed in, in these categories, that, that information's not here. And it's probably really tough to, to recreate that far back, unfortunately.
If you lay this information out, it begs the question, what are we doing different?
Yeah, like so, for example, mixed use commercial, like let's just, I'm just going to pretend mixed use is more in this plan. That's the impression I got from reading it. So then what, but I didn't get the, I couldn't take that map. I don't have it digitally to analyze. Is it more? Is it, are, are we going for eighteen percent of that or staying the same? I'm not asking you to answer that. I'm just saying that would be really useful.
Well, our, our, our future land use map does stay the same between twenty fifteen and, and this plan.
Okay.
What changes is, um, the consolidation of the land use categories.
And then also I would assume the strategies to get there because that's what we were talking about is we haven't hit our, we have our desired density and we're not getting it.
Right.
Right. In some respects, I'm, I'm listening to you all talk and I'm like, I'm wondering if this thing is, it's not beating, it's not. A, a good heading would help clarify this. I think it's going to be hard for us to, um, create those trend lines through time of what the map.
Let's talk to it because maybe we're opening up here, um, more of an issue than I even initially thought. So you, when you bring up the map, that it's not changing, right? Yeah, I could see the logic of that potentially. The problem is we know that we only achieve fifty percent of the density.
That we want, right?
That we want it. What are we doing to correct that? I mean, I know some of the language that we've talked about. I know we put about, uh, infill sites and, and however, I think that's an important piece because if we don't, if we do not correct, if we keep getting fifty percent, right? And actually we want to exceed the densities that we had. So while we're not changing the maps, maybe we need to think about that. We, we need to, we, we're looking for a higher density. Hopefully we're getting more than, you know, ten percent, less than ten percent in, in that higher housing. Hopefully, we're getting more than, you know, ten percent, less than ten percent in, in that higher housing. But if not, you know, we're not going to achieve what we're saying our capacities are.
Yeah, I think what you're, maybe we would to get to that line for the two fifteen, two thousand fifteen plan. Residential two point six, two to six dwelling units per acres, thirty percent. And from six to thirty-four is, is almost ten, right? And so are we, with this plan, are we taking the stuff in the orange and dropping it from thirty to fifteen? And, and for the stuff that's in the, the higher density residential, are we going from ten to twenty-five? I think that's what you're sort of intimating.
And then take a shot at what you're saying. So to me, it's two different things. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, one of them is these numbers, these numbers are the areas within the map. So you're saying.
Different maps from each plan.
Yep.
They represented the different maps from each plan.
Yep, and twenty fifteen and twenty forty-four don't change.
Not significantly.
Significantly, they just get combined. So one thing is to say, well, let's just simplify it. Residential is still at, say, fifty percent overall, the residential uses. They were in twenty fifteen, they are in twenty twenty-five. But we've only achieved fifty-eight percent of the development that we were anticipating in those. That doesn't necessarily mean we increased the size of these percentages. It means we do a better job of maximizing density inside of the existing percentage, that's right.
I think there is a conversation of should we be increasing the size of the higher end density? Maybe when, when, when.
How are we gonna achieve it, right? Which category are we gonna get units in units?
Right.
And, and I would just say, I think as we've been discussing the plan, as we've sort of been talking with the board supervisors. You know, some of the conversations we've had. It's been more of an emphasis on trying to, you know, let me put it this way. Holding Cooper Center says we need thirty-one thousand, commonly thirty-one thousand people in the future. I think that the intent is to try majority of those people in the activity centers as opposed to, some of the lower density areas shown on our, our comp plan. And I, and I think the idea of that those areas. Some of the debates and stuff we've been listening to, the idea of significantly increasing the density of some of those neighborhoods has, wasn't really the direction that we were given to on the plan.
Well, I guess the active word there is significant. If anybody is saying significant, I mean, maybe it's, if you have nine percent of your, your high end density units. You know, ten percent, it is, should that be a ten percent? I'm, I'm questioning that now because we need to achieve more density.
Yeah.
We're trying to get it in every, when it seems like we all ask that question. When, when there's an applicant in front of us that's asking for a certain amount, we're saying, I'd be thought about going higher. Right? And so how do we incentivize that? I, I think that's a key to the plan or we're gonna wind up being in the same position on achieving half the density that, that we have allocated.
We had a developer come back in several weeks ago and ask for more resident, residential above commercial.
Yeah.
Because they heard us chatting about this all the time and thought, hey, maybe we should go back and get more. And we're like, yeah, great. So, but there are things in this plan and the strategies that talk about like incentives and different things. And you could get more density if you do this for affordable housing or if you do this. But it, it was like nibbling at the edges. It was special situations or it, it's not a bold move that will get us that. And then I've stood up here before, I'll just be really quick. I have said we should just pick some areas and rezone them. Because the development community has told us that part of the reason they don't bother is because of the onerousness of our process. They just go ahead and go with the current zoning, even though we're saying in the comp plan, future land use map. Oh, we could go to thirty-six units per acre, but it's, you still have to come in and ask for that. You still have to get a rezoning. And it's, it takes more effort versus the approach that Charles will take and not, I'm not, don't talk about their current. But twenty years ago, they actually did a big rezoning and increased density in certain neighborhoods. So that it just, you could just come in and buy right and do these things. Because I, yeah, I, I don't see us, I don't see how we get there unless we do something bolder.
And, and I would say that I think the intent is to, you know, in these activity centers, find the boundaries of them as we move forward. And looking at ways to not only potentially incentivize, but also to lay that foundation for significant increases of density in those areas. And to the extent that the stuff, I think, at, at the point I'm taking, uh, Mr. Carol is the, the ones in the lower two ends of this graph. You're not on, I think what you're suggesting is they should be either smaller in the area or.
Higher density.
Higher in density.
Well, I just think that this is a, a, a big opportunity for us to stress the fact that in the development areas, right? Because we've made a big case of we're gonna keep the development area the same size, it's not gonna grow. So if it's not gonna grow, we need to densify. That is a big move in this plan. To me, that is the move in this plan. I mean, there's things that we're doing, the rural areas and all, but in the development areas.
Yep.
Is the densification. And we missed that mark last time. If we don't learn from that, then I think we've missed the mark in AC forty-four. So we, and this is an opportunity, it's right in the front. Use this graph and then use the big takeaways and say, this is why, you know, and we didn't hit these marks. We fell short. Therefore, here's some of our guiding principles. We need to be more dense in our development areas. We, we, we have our opportunity zones, development. All the things that we're doing in the plan tie them to how can we be more dense? If we don't do that and we don't send that message, then we failed.
To the, to the point of being able to tell, use this table to tell the story, I like that idea immensely. And certainly, we can do that. Just making sure, you know, that the fine point of when you look at the future land use map. Should we have made, and people call it the yellow areas because that tends to be the three to six dwelling unit areas. A lot of the single family neighborhoods. Should we made that smaller or should we have somehow enabled that to be rezoned to higher density, some of those neighborhoods? Yes, the plan doesn't, um, maybe around some of the margins of some of the activity centers, that might happen. But broadly speaking, that was not the direction that we received staff.
We did talk a fair amount about the missing middle, right? And we looked at those categories and I think we felt comfortable with where that was headed and that that had been covered in the revised plan.
And I think that the opportunity to sort of visit that missing middle and some of those things. Potentially the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
We will start talking about like, how are the regulations gonna play out so that you get closer to that? You know, higher end of the three to six range. I think there's opportunities. There was also, um, there was discussion at times, we brought these conversations up, especially with the board. Some trepidation.
I think the, 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 the need to truly emphasize how we achieve the density. It's also the argument for not changing the map. If you have a clear path on how we achieve the density, then you can say, well, we're not changing the map. Because we have a path, we have a way to incentivize more density and actually achieve it. And not leave on the table another forty-two percent or whatever it is that we left. Otherwise, you, there's a lot of criticism, there'll be more criticism, why are we changing the map? Why are we not achieving the more density, looking at, you know, more, more of the missing middle? Because we have that in places like we have it in Crozay maybe, but not in a lot of other places. So I just think that, that we really gotta hit that home. Hit it home here, here. I think we have it in, in, in what we've, you know, as you move into, to our, our growth management policies and two and three. They're there, we, I still think we need to emphasize them more. And I, here at the beginning, there's an opportunity to do that. Personally, from my viewpoint, this is a critical piece of, of AC forty-four.
I agree. Yeah, a hundred percent. So kind of one thing that just strike, struck me is that we've been talking about the flume a lot when we're looking at this graphic. And you've been talking about how you have links in the table of contents to, like hot links to take you to other sections of the plan. It might be interesting to have a hot link that takes you from here to the flume. So it's kind of like, this is where we've taken, this is where we were, this is where we are now. If you're interested, you can look at this and it clicks and sends you over to that document. And then when you get there, there's a, there's a section right after, I think this is in part three and page twenty-six where it talks about future land use interpretation policy. So it kind of talks about density, it talks about, there's a section here that says that the density proposed by the new developments above the density range recommended by the relevant land use category. Following factors may make proposed densities above the recommended densities range suitable. And then it encourages, um, you know, the ways that you can do that, so it ties that off.
And that should be in an entry, in our introductory section.
Yeah.
But thi- this is what we're trying to achieve. This is one of the big takeaways of the previous plan that wasn't achieving density.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's in our plan, we have the policy, we have, we have the opportunities laid out.
Absolutely. Does that make sense to everybody? Enough to?
I think so.
Okay, great. Good comments. All right, let's see, now you threw me all off.
I won't say anything else.
No, 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 that was all, that was all good stuff. Ah, no, that's great. So let's see, part one, are we done with part one? Everybody's good with part one?
Are we done with part one?
All right, let's move on to part two. Which I do not have in front of me here. Um, any comments on part two? That's the good segue because that's the, um, shoot, why is it not coming up? Development areas, right?
Growth management.
Growth management, thank you. Yes, a lot of comments.
Okay, hit it.
Okay. Okay, so factor four on page nine. The twenty twenty-two land use build-out analysis excluded a significant acreage of properties for redevelopment based upon criteria. Which precluded potential redevelopment grants and incentives. I think we should include here something specifically about evaluating underperforming properties with excessive parking or some of the other properties that have been mentioned. I think, I think that analysis wa- was not adequate in terms of what we can achieve. I also agree with SCLC that the future development area boundary section be moved to standalone planning document and not be made part of the comprehensive plan at this time. It really feels like a work in progress. And, and it was never really subjected to a review by, by us as the planning commission. Um, and not the same level of review as other sections and still feel, it just really feels like a work in progress. Nonetheless, if it's to remain. Then for item six on page ten, we should take a more balanced approach.
Hey Lonnie, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I just want to make sure, because I, I'm tracking with what you're saying. Where does that start? You're talking about the development areas utilization review?
Yeah, yeah, I would say.
Starting on page seven?
Yes.
I think that's where, that's where it starts to think. Not page eleven.
Oh, sorry, did I have the wrong page number?
I don't know, I'm looking at the table of contents.
Just a second.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong.
No, no, I'm on the right, this is what. Let me just align that one quick.
We have something on the screen, is this what you're looking at? Lonnie?
Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, okay, so, um. So I definitely say that, so here it does talk about the development areas utilization review. I think that my first comment was, was definitely related to, was related to this. I think that this is, this is somewhat flawed.
Somewhat what? I can't hear you down here.
Sorry. That the development areas utilization review is, is flawed because it didn't include this, this property submission.
So SCLC mentioned the boundary expansion.
Yeah, the boundary expansion is, is a separate as, as we, we go further down in there.
That starts on page eleven, I think, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're. Yep, got it.
Okay. Before we even get to that, um, if you go to page ten for me.
Well, I guess before you go on, I don't know.
We can stop.
Yeah, like let's pause there for just a second. Where it says, when considering potential future changes to the development area boundaries, it's important to note there is no policy that the development area boundary should remain unchanged. I, I don't recall us. If, if, if you read that sentence, then that it is saying that we're open to changing the boundaries.
I would just point out that pretty much every comprehensive plan has changed the boundaries at one time or another.
But it, this is that kind of sentence that alarms people. And it's like, are we trying to say that we are ready to change the boundaries? Because we have no policy that we're not, so therefore we are? We're just trying to unpack the logic of this statement.
I think that statement basically. I mean, I can think of examples of many of the plans we've had where the years have been reduced or slightly tweaked or added on. The boundary in various comprehensive plans. So the fact that the boundary itself is valuable, I think, is part of the policy. Now, does it go from five percent to ten percent? I think the intent is not to significantly increase it.
But it takes a comprehensive plan to change that number.
Yes.
So.
So it's saying there's no policy that we're not changing it. And I, I get, I don't know if I even just said that right, but, um, I feel like this planning commission was, was pretty clear that we wanted to try to stay within our boundaries so that we can't, because if we're like, hey, we can expand it. Yeah, any, you know, we just need some rules and then we can look at it. I'm not saying that we would never expand it, but the point is that, um, we talked about this extensively. That it, instead of like, I'm a developer and I think they'll probably expand it soon, so I'm gonna buy up Mrs. Smith and Fred and Ted's properties on the outside and just wait. That, that driving that land speculation. Versus us saying, no, really, we're really gonna try to stay in our boundaries. So development community, you really should come to us with infill projects and density inside the boundaries. But if we're really wishy-washy, then we're, it's gonna send the signal, it sends the signal. We sound wishy-washy, it sends a signal that we are like, hey, we're open, bring it on. And it, I'm, I'm, I hope no one quotes that, but, because it's an example. But yeah, I, I, I really had, I, I don't like what that reads. You could say something more factual like that the county has not currently made a, a proposal to expand the development boundary. That's a statement of fact two.
Yeah.
Isn't it?
The AC forty-four is, is, is reforming the boundaries.
That's what I thought, but that's not what that sentence says.
It does not.
The sentence says we have no policy. And we've made this boundary so that we can try to push people to work with us.
Yeah, I mean, it's another example of sort of the wishy-washy language that I was speaking of before.
It's right there, but.
I mean, I think, I think we want to set the expectations for what we want to see. And, and of course, of course, it can be changed. Of course, the board supervisors or others can, can decide that they want to change that. But. The whole point is to have goals, right?
Yeah, I think we were just talking about this. So the purpose of this section is to, well, the previous section of the development areas utilization review. It's just sort of like, it was something we talked extensively with the board about. It was like guidelines to make sure we understand how we're using the development area and making sure that we're using it to be able to assess that we're, uh, how well we're utilizing it. The next one, the future development area boundaries. We were also sort of tasked with setting a set of criteria that if we do want to change it or in some respects reduce it. That we would have a set of criteria. I think that the, at this time, AC forty-four, I know that's the direction we've been given is we're not expanding the development areas. And I would just say, um, two thousand fifteen, I can think of a couple of places where actually added to the development area. Adjacent to the Sieg property, for example, there was a bit of land there that was added. Adjacent to the Sieg property, for example, there was a bit of land there that was added. Some of the earlier comp plans.
The 35 acres, I believe, roughly.
And yeah.
But it was originally proposed to be like 135 acres, I think.
Yeah.
We fought hard to cut that back.
I appreciate that, but I just, I think that there is, there is an intent in this section to sort of set some of the rules that would happen to, if the development area. And if nothing else, to provide us with guidelines for what we would do if we were to expand.
So why could we not say at this time, there is no plan to expand the development areas? If they were to be considered for future expansion, these are the types of criteria that should be considered. And that's fine. That's, that's direct and factually accurate.
Hey Karen.
Yes.
Look at the next paragraph.
We're, we're gonna, we're suggesting one thing, just what if you were to just take out that first paragraph? And then start with the second paragraph.
Yeah, maybe you tweak a little bit at the beginning or whatever, but.
And I would just take it back to.
Everything you just said, the first paragraph to me confuses it.
Right.
And, and they lose, and, and it's counter to what we were just talking about.
Correct.
I mean, there is a sentence there that I do like though, but I think it needs to be fixed. I do think premature boundary revisions, once again, wishy washy language. Is where it says premature boundary revisions could undermine the growth management policy. I do think we should have something that said premature boundary revisions would undermine the growth management policy.
Well, it sort of says that in, in the second, if you keep going down there, it does talk a little bit about that. While the comprehensive plan emphasizes maximizing efficient land use within the current boundaries and does not recommend boundary revisions, it's still essential to plan for potential future revisions, even if none are currently anticipated.
But I think you can end that paragraph with that statement. It's a, a premature boundary revision would undermine the.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. I mean, I, many months ago, since we've been at this for years now. I, I'd sent staff a, you know, the criteria that is used for the growth boundary in the Portland metro region. They rarely change it, but they have very strict criteria. So everybody knows. And sometimes it does make sense and they do tweak it. But it's all laid out very clear. Everybody knows it's a very hierarchical and strict process that you would use to evaluate the efficacy or the need to do it.
Well. You know, as always, appreciate the feedback. Page six, we sort of talk about the growth management policy there. The bottom, the paragraph in the bottom of the left-hand column, development area boundaries from remaining unchanged. You know, we are, we tried to state in that section that, that this particular comp plan, there is not, we're not changing the boundary. The, again, these other two sections, one was to provide guidance for how, what we're doing within the development area. And the next one was to to try and sort of set what you were saying that you do in Portland. If you're going to expand it, these are the factors you need to consider. And that, that was really the intent of the way this is sort of set up, those three major sections.
Well, I like Fred's proposal, Chairman Mitchell's proposal to just take out the first paragraph. Everything else communicates what you needed to communicate.
I would, I would end that paragraph though, with, with the statement of a premature boundary revision will undermine.
Okay.
So the could becomes would.
All right, that was great.
It's just being consistent. We agree with what you said. Michael, that there, there's, you bring in those, those points along the way. I just think we need to be consistent throughout the entire document. And this is a, that paragraph brings in some inconsistency.
Commissioner Murray, you're in a roll.
Yes, okay. So if we, if we move forward, if we, if we move forward. If we go to the next, next page here. Okay, so here we have criteria for removing underperforming areas from the development areas. First, I would take that first bullet and I would strike that completely. Because if you look at, it looks like what we're saying here is that if an area is not walkable and mixed use, that we should remove it from the development areas. When that's the exact sort of place that we need to put resources into. If we look at Charlottesville, there are many places that were not walkable and were not mixed used, but are now. And so I think that's a terrible criteria that should be removed. The other thing that I think is very problematic is this, this awkward sentence, if locations in the development areas are designated as rural area, the total acreage that is swapped to the development area should be based in part on the developmental acreage of the now rural land. First, that's some crazy word salad going on there. I'm, I'm not even sure what that means. But, but second of all, I think.
Oh, sorry.
Where are you getting Lonnie?
In the italic key words.
On 12.
Yeah, I was looking at the bullets.
At, at the very bottom.
Got it.
And so my issue with this, and, and this gets a part of the issue with swaps in general, is that for a swap to actually be effective, there, something needs to be different about that thing that it swapped before and after. So let's take, you have a, a riparian buffer of 100 feet and the development area, it can't be developed now. If we swap that to the rural area, then what's changed about it? Couldn't be developed before, still can't be developed. Nothing changed. But if then you're adding some other place, the development area based upon that, it's, it's just an expansion. It's not really a swap at all. Um, likewise.
I see, I see what you mean. It was undevelopable in the rural area. Just by swapping acre per acre, it now makes it developable. So you did, you actually gained more development area? Is that what you're saying? More development?
Well, well, what I'm saying is, is that, is actually the opposite. What I'm saying is that if you're taking a, a place, if you're taking some place in the development area that has no practical development rights.
Right.
And then you're just making that rural area, all you've done is changed the, the color on the map.
Right.
That, you know.
Yeah.
And likewise, if you take someplace that ha- already has water and sewer, and say, okay, we're going to change the color on the map and now this is rural area. Well, all you've done is just created non-conforming use in the rural area. You've created a, a kind of, you know, a suburban development with water and sewer in the rural area. You haven't really swapped anything. Now, if you took an area that's completely undeveloped, and there aren't very few of those, that that isn't the development area, but has development rights, and you say, we're going to transfer this very equivalent number of development rights in the rural area, that would be a legitimate swap.
Right. I don't, I don't even understand why we even have this sentence. I'm being very basic here, just quickly. Why would we be taking development area and making it rural?
It, I.
But what, when would we do that?
We should ask them what the intent.
What is the, what is, why would we do that?
It, yeah, I think, I think there may be reasons to add land to the, reasons to move land to the rural area or reasons to, to to expand the development areas, but those are two independent actions.
Right, they're, yes.
They're, they're not connected.
Why don't we ask staff to, to, to explain that italicized sentence to us?
What, what is it, what is it trying to do? They're not going to tell us a secret example that they used.
Yeah, then we could talk about that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm just, I was like, I was.
I'm just kidding around. Go ahead.
Yeah, I. The board, we talked extensively about Ravanna Village.
Yeah, right.
And several of the board members were talking about that as an area not very walkable, kind of out there. And maybe removing some of that and replacing it either with developable area internal. We also looked at a few sites that are land that's been purchased for parkland, sort of around Ragged Mountain that's come out. There's a, another place, you're going to probably hear about it soon, on Stillhouse Mountain, where somebody wants to, it's, you know, heavily encumbered with a lot of environmental features, mountain top protection. And so areas like that were like coming out. And I think the developed, the thought was, if you're going to take those types of areas out of the development area and put them into the rural area, we should like be able to maintain some of that. We should find other places that maybe would be comparable in area, that would be comparable in area to make up for those lost areas that would come out of the development area.
So you would increase, you would take the develop, like Ravanna Village is in the development area.
Yeah.
You would move that into the rural area.
Right.
You would find another equal sized portion of land somewhere around the perimeter of the existing development area to then bump out into.
That was broadly speaking, the rules. I mean, we didn't, what was it, was there, there wasn't like a no direct analysis was performed, no areas were nominated to come in or come out. But generally, we were, as we were talking with the supervisors, there was a lot of discussion about Ravanna Village. And my hesitancy and I and the more I thought about it, they did talk about it. So I, I'm happy to bring that up. And that was kind of where we were on that. We were following some of the direction that we were getting from them.
I'm not sure that that's what this, that is for the average reader. I'm not sure that that's what they're going to get out of, out of that.
So here's one thing I would maybe suggest we think about is that I don't think we're going to, well, I don't think we're going to or we want to remove, maybe we do, or maybe some of us do, to remove the possibility of adjusting the development area, period.
Yeah.
If you were losing it somewhere else, that you currently can do it.
Yeah, if, so.
I'm fine.
So if there's a general consensus around that, and I think that, that's like, now we're talking comprehensive plan level. We don't know exactly where we're talking about. We're just saying that there is the possibility that might work somewhere. And I've said to people, because people have asked me, what do, what do you think about expanding the develop or adjusting it and swapping? And my response has always been, I don't know. I really need to see. There may be a really reasonable location.
Place to expand the development area, that wherever the blob.
That's right. And there may be a reasonable location that might fit the, the criteria, which I'm open to.
I, I think there could be reasonable locations as well, but I think part of the criteria has to be that you were not just changing the color on the map. So that if, if there is a, you know, you mentioned a, you mentioned a property that is currently in the development area that has a lot of natural resource source concerns, well, how many development rights does it have practically? Something like, how many houses could, if they just maxed out what they could do, how many, you know, units could they build there? I think that that would be, that would be a reasonable criteria for determining, you know, and, you know, if you're going to expand based upon that, what that expansion would look like. Now, if practically they could only put two homes there in the development area, because it's a mountainous and there's so many streams. You know, are you really doing anything to just change the color in the map and now call it rural area? You know, in the case of Ravanna Village.
But, but that could be a, a criteria. I, I think what you laid out is a good example where if, if, if there's an area that's within the development area, but from a practical matter, you really can't achieve.
Think of some places where there's geologic formations that's like, you would have to blow it up to develop there and it's so expensive. Nobody wants to do that.
Right, so you're not really going to achieve, yeah, for a globe story, you said, sensitive areas. So you're not going to achieve the density, but there's someplace else within, say, some of the borders that we could achieve density and there's already growth, then, you know, how you create that flexibility on we're, we're trading the acreage remains the same, but here's an opportunity to, and I think this reinforces the density question, right, or problem that we have, which is hey, we can't really achieve the density in this, in this 10 acres. But these 10 acres over here, we could actually achieve quite a bit of density. Is there, you know, a trade there? Right now, I don't know what the process is to do that. I'm sure he's going to go to the, to us, to the board, to, you know. But perhaps there's a, there's a process to achieve that. And, and that's probably what you're trying to say that.
I think it needs to be rewritten.
It's just, it doesn't, it doesn't really communicate that.
That's right.
I think it just needs rewriting.
But I would, I mean, I would agree with that. I think that this makes sense.
Yeah, because we have some spots in the growth area that you, you just can't build on it.
Right.
Yeah.
Practically.
But then the, the question remains like, this, this seems like a, something that requires significant discussion. This seems like something that's at the very beginning stages. Is this even the right place for it in the comprehensive plan? Should the idea of a development area swap, that we haven't really figured out that criteria, we're still sort of thinking about it? Is this really?
Could say the criteria needs to be fully fleshed out before it could occur and but it should be done. And these are some tenants to consider. The comp plan could be at that level without having it all fleshed.
Good. So the, yeah, even thinking about like the criteria, maybe this is what the SCLC was saying. The criteria for removing underperforming areas from the development area still needs to be defined. Maybe that's a separate document? Is that what they were suggesting?
They, they were suggesting, you know, doing a separate, separate document. I mean, I think s- some of the things here too, is, as I said, you can't, I think I think the risk here with this is that it could just be a expansion of the development area by another name. If you just say, okay, well, here's these areas, they're not developable anyway. And now we're just going to call them rural area and use that as the basis for an expansion, then it's just an expansion.
Like the cat, like this plan does, in this plan, it does talk about using gross density instead of net. So it's trying to push that, like if this property can't be developed, you know, and you're going to swap it, but it, because it has flood plains and steep slopes and all that. The, this plan currently says you should use the gross density and never mind all that, just how many units per acre could you fit? Net density is less because you have to subtract out the undevelopable land. This plan is calling for the use of gross density. So I'm just, just pointing that out. It, it, it's saying you shouldn't.
And that's one of the tools, obviously, that this plan is using.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
No, I'm not either. I mean, I think we all agree that that's one way to, to achieve the higher density. But perhaps, because I, I, I see your point. But let's say that one, one criteria is that the growth area acreage remains the same, right? So development, so that the areas have to remain the same, you're, you're close to it. But I think the other piece would be a significant gain in density. Right? So are you, are you now developing an area that you can achieve significant more density than you could have in that other parcel that was, you know, more encumbered for whatever reason? So I think there's some criteria, like we could build to build the case on when you would do that, but it wouldn't be you know, something that you would do very easily or all the time. It would have to be certain specific criterias that you would have to meet in order to fall into that category of creating that swap opportunity.
I think there also has to be a tangible conservation benefit of moving that property out of the development area into the rural area as well, so that, that you have both sides. I, I would be very concerned about something like Ravanna Village, you know. I think, you know, we're not going to cut off their water and sewer. So in all practical sense, there's still development area. We're not going to say like, well, if, you know, someone's robbing your house, we're not going to send the police or or if your house is burning down, we're not going to send the fire department. So in all practical sense, you know, just calling that rural area does nothing. So I think that that's a, you know, I think there's got to be a tangible conservation benefit before something like this occurs. That, that's equivalent to the, the density that's gained.
So that there's the, if we think about the big picture, the big picture is, would there be a reasonable, potentially a reasonable timeline? I'm doing this, so I get my brain around it, that we might expand to development area. And if the answer seems to be yes, there might be a reasonable opportunity to do that. Do we all agree that's true?
I, I don't know. I thought this conversation was about, you know, swapping.
Well, that's what I mean by, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying. Expand the development area from swap, that's, sorry.
Development ability.
Yeah.
But the acre, the literal acreage would be the same.
That's right. That's what I meant. Swapping, not expanded development.
Right, but you would be able to build on it, the thing that you got in the.
So that, that was my next thing. So if we agree with that first part, the swapping piece, then there's the criteria.
Right.
And you've been speaking a lot to the criteria, I think. And that's expanded upon here. Right? There's, there's quite a few factors that are outlined on pages 13, 14, 15. And so.
So I think, but the criteria for, for page 12 is sparse.
The, it's, it's expanded on in terms of factors and impacts and standards on the next few pages. And some of them, I think you've covered, like water supply, watershed, form of development, natural boundaries. Seems like some of what you were suggesting is already covered in there. I, I just don't know.
That's, that's in terms of the receiving. I'm talking about in terms of the sending. So, so in terms of your taking, so, I mean, one could say, for example, and. for example, and I think this is, it was even floated, well, we have a lot of development area, um, that's, you know, required, you know, required to be stream buffer. Or we had, there's a lot of land that's already biscuit run state park. Do we just say, oh, well, we can just swap that land and now create development area? Well, the, the problem is, is that it changes nothing. And that's the essential, essential thing, is it couldn't be developed before. Changed the common, it still can't be developed. You haven't swapped.
We're trying to get more density. So if you have a property that has like, because of stream buffers, it's not the next thing. You could only ever fit 10 units on it. But there's another piece of property that's flat and unencumbered with steep slopes and stream things. So you could get 30 units on it, it would be worth doing. Because we want more density per acre than what we're getting.
So what, what happens that, so what happens that place, so that what happens to the rural area? So what happens to the place that was development area that's now rural area? What is the conservation benefit for that property? That would changes for it by making it rural area? How does it become more conserved?
It doesn't necessarily. It's just, it's like a rock formation and it's still a rock formation. You're trying to suggest, I know what you're suggesting. You're saying, if I may, that, um, there, that this is now like a, it's, it's environmentally unique or special, and now it's better protected because we put it in the rural area. Otherwise, it could just sit in the development area and nobody will develop it anyway. So it's, it's Nick's Knox. I, I don't, I don't have that worry. I, I, you know, I'm not, I don't need, I don't think it needs to be a special ecological area to move into the rural.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that it can't just be a change in the color in the map. There has to be a tangible benefit from doing.
The benefit is the additional density. Instead of having, I'll, I'll just call it faux development land, land that is in our boundary, but for practical purposes, you really can't build on it. And there's, I can think of so many spots like that.
So, but how's that different from just a straight up expansion? If we just ignored the change in color of that property and just said, well, we're just going to expand.
We're expanding the amount of units that we can get versus the land mass acreage.
But you could, but you could do that anyway. You could say, here's an area, we're going to designate this development area and we're going to make it high density. And just ignore the fact of taking an area that's undevelopable out of the development area and making it rural area. And it has the same, it has the same effect.
I think that the board, when they were talking about this, recognized that there were portions of the development area that either they didn't want to develop, it could be developed, but they didn't want to develop it. Ravenna Village was one of the places they talked about, or it would be difficult to develop because of some sort of environmental constraints. Or because it'd been, it'd been out the reservoir, there was a huge track of land that the city bought, brought into the, out of the Ragged Mountain Park. So you like lost some acreage there. And I think the idea here was, I think that the board, I don't want to put too much in their, not words in their mouth, but I think that they recognized along what Karen's saying is, hey, we still need some land to meet our affordability requirements and other things. And so if we're going to take, if this land's being removed from the development area and we're going to try and stay at 5%, we may need to pick up some of these other areas that are maybe more suitable for development because they're not as equally constrained either environmental or political or for other reasons. I do take your point that if the land is taken out, then it's still in the jurisdictional area. Maybe that's something that we should put in here, that maybe the jurisdictional designation should come off that property as well. But I think just to the point, that's what the board was talking about when we wrote this.
I think there should be a ta- a tangible reduction in the development potential of that land by it being moved from one spot to another. You know, there should be some, some change of some kind that occurs. Otherwise, you, you're just, it's, it's not, it's just an expansion. It's not swap at all.
They downzone the land, for example?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It, it would, it would have to be, have to be downzoned, but it would have to have some buil- buildable potential that is being removed.
Maybe the best way to look at it, it was a vehicle for recognizing some parts of the development area, maybe aren't suitable for development. We should take them out. And if we do that, we probably should add some others. I, I, I think it was less to your point of wanting to expand something than to have a vehicle to take something out.
Yeah. And so that gets me to my previous point, that I think these are two separate things. I think you have, there, there are needs to take land out of the development area in cases because it's not developable. And that, that's legitimate. And there, and there may be cases to do an expansion. But I think you get into tricky territory when you try to say, make equivalencies that one is actually related somehow to the other one. Um, it just becomes greenwashing.
Well, there, it, it's complicated because there are also going to be properties. One comes to mind, particular, that's 500 acres. And of that 500 acres, it's in the development area, it's surrounded by development area. 200 of it, of those acres are not developable. But you can't take those 200 acres out and put them in the rural area because they're nested in the development area. Right? We're really talking about the borders. We're not talking about infill pieces. So.
Maybe that's another thing we should put in this section, something.
Right.
Yeah.
It's more talk micro local terms, nip and tucks.
Yeah.
You know, we need to add here and out of it there more. And so I think the, the boundary aspect is probably another thing we should be adding to this.
Yeah, I do think, I don't know that we're going to solve this.
Right.
Today, and there's opportunities we draft this, but I do think the language of what you're trying to achieve in that swap
could be clearer.
Could be clearer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sentence was.
It's all well taken. Yeah, because we're talking about identifying strengths, gaps and priority issues. I think this is a priority issue that has gaps.
Yeah. Yeah.
Going back to, um, going back to page 11, and this is another sort of wishy washy statement. It says, there's a, there's a sentence, however, the current development areas may be unable to accommodate housing and employment needs, an issue already reflected in rising land costs and declining housing affordability. That conflicts with earlier statements that we have, that we have sufficient supply for 10 to 20 years. It's also not a proven statement that prematurely expanding the development areas would necessarily result in housing affordability. I would, that's the kind, another example, the sort of wishy washy language that I would just strike out of that. Particularly as SELC pointed out, at this, at the time of the analysis, 14,881 residential units were in the development pipeline, well and above the high end 20 year forecast of future needs of 13, 500 units. So these, so going, going down. The other thing I think would be helpful here too, is if we're looking at criteria for expansion of the development area, else, elsewhere in this plan, we talk about, we talk about potentially looking at transfer of development rights. I think it'd be good to have a commitment right now, that if an expansion is to occur, that we use transfer of development rights to accomplish it. What this would do, I think, would, it would remove the incentive for people to just buy up that land and for that land to inflate in value. Because we wouldn't be creating development rights out of thin air in that expansion. They would have to purchase those development rights. So you wouldn't be just giving a windfall to whoever owns those properties. Because they would have to participate in the creation of that density that occurs. So if we were to put a language like that in there, that expansion was to occur, that we would, we would commit using transfer of development rights, it, it would, it would reduce the potential for speculation.
Did you all consider TDRs as part of the language? And what were, what was your thinking in terms of including it or not?
In the strategies.
Yeah, because I feel like we've, we've talked about this.
We're just, you know, definitely when we were discussing this with the, um, the board, this idea of TDRs came up and we had a long discussion about them. And.
Why don't we do this, since, just because we've got, we haven't even gotten part three yet. Why don't we shell this now and, and take that into consideration, put that in there?
Can I ask a, a question just quick?
Yeah, you want to take a break?
Well, just a really quick question. I know that there's a purchase of development rights program. Virginia used to have a number of counties partook of it. It doesn't, there's currently not any funding in it. Are, so some governments purchased development rights from the places they didn't want to develop and far out places, whatever.
Like our ACE program.
Does, yeah. So, but Lonnie was just talking about a developer purchasing development rights. So that was my, that's my question. I mean, can an individual just purchase development rights from Farmer Brown over there and say, I've purchased the, I don't think, I don't think that can occur.
Under state law or under, in, in, in our current regime of regulations of the county?
And i- in Virginia. I, I don't know of a case of that happening. You can transfer development rights, but you can't, a, a developer cannot purchase development rights from somewhere and then say, hey, I purchased these 40, they don't exist. Now I want the county to expand this development area for the, for, to fit 40 units on the edge or something. I don't think you can do that.
That's a TDR.
Yeah, I know, but the, the way he said it sounded different. He said purchase, the developer would purchase the rights.
So, so to be clear, there's, there's a bunch of requirements that have to go into that. The county has to designate a sending and receiving area. And there's another part in, in the rural area section where it goes into more detail about, about that sort of thing, about some suggested sending areas and suggested receiving areas. I, I think that, um, the receiving area piece is problematic.
You were talking about the developer purchasing rights from a sending area.
Purchasing rights from a sending area, correct.
I thought you bet.
And the county would have to designate that, it would have to designate that expansion development area as a receiving area.
Right. And just for, you know, everyone's memory, the county had took this on like six, 15, 16 years ago, and this went on for a couple of years and they didn't succeed in making it work. But we'll take a break.
Well, why don't we, are we good with, do we still have more comments on part two? I'm not trying to hurry us, but I was thinking we'd take a, we could take a break after we finish with part two, but if we still have a significant amount, we'll take a break.
Couple. Nothing like Commissioner Murray here.
How you doing, Commissioner Murray? Do you have more?
Yeah, I don't have any more on, I think that that's, that's what I have on that, that section. Okay.
Let's hear from Corey.
Yeah, let's do that. Commissioner Flaber? Corey, would you mind pulling your microphone?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, super brief. Um, it feels like there, there might be some value in an image that shows the development areas and there's boundaries here. I'm sure it exists. I've never seen it in the, the documents here, but maybe in this section, there may be value to that. And as I'm listening to this conversation, this might be one of those sections where less is more, like as I'm looking at it, there are some parts that stand out to me as higher importance and it might be worth looking at, how can you get this thing a haircut? Yeah, so that's some advice, maybe. This might be a section where less is more.
I would just say that this thing expanded due to conversations we were having to the board.
Now you're this great editor to say things with less words.
Well, that may be different, but the content that was put in there was, and fair enough, there could be ways to better express ourselves or do it more succinctly, but the, the intent, a lot of that stuff came in through board conversation. Yeah, remember there's a lot of actors in this, 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 this development.
It's a big ecosystem.
All right. Any other comments on part two? All right. Why don't we take a eight minute recess, come back at, uh, 7:55. We convened and we do have a quorum. We'll continue the conversation. And we have now moved to, um, our part three section. Who would like to begin? Plan implementation. Want to, we'll start with development areas, land use. Any big picture questions, comments, concerns?
I guess it's overarching, Mr. Chairman. I, I did agree with Commissioner Firehawk's, um, the sentiment around what we're calling goals versus objectives versus action items. That, just want to say I did concur, uh, with that sentiment there.
I know just both, but I, I only have a few. On page 26, there's a statement that says, um, if portions of the property are partially designated with a recreation, open space or green systems land use category, the principal land use designation, e.g. residential mixed use, should be applied to the full acreage of the property for the purpose of calculating a suitable density. Um, while in principle, I agree with this in the, the sense of, we talked about the need for additional density in the development areas. I worry about the unintended effect that this could end up having less land being dedicated to green space by increasing the value of the land. Absence some other mechanism of like an urban transfer development rights policy, or, you know, as I stated later, the idea of, um, the ability to proffer into a fund for green space. You know, we may just end up with less green space in the development areas, um, by having that policy. Um, because, you know, once the, the property value gets too high, there's, you just remove the incentive to offer any of that back as green space. Pages 36, 37 speak of increasing access to nature. Um, one of the things I noticed, you know, in Croze, uh, it's kind of unique is that it has a policy of requiring a 50 to 100 foot buffer on intermittent streams. This resulted in more green space where, where community trails can be located. And yet, Croze still has a significant amount of density, um, compared with the other development areas. I think it's one of the fastest growing development areas, is it not? I think we should consider adopting resource management areas, um, and, and possibly an urban transfer development rights program that can protect, protect water and provide more green space. Um, I think there's this idea that we think that providing more protection for screen, streams will result in less density, but I think Croze proves that wrong. Um, I think Croze has done a, a very good job of creating density and also having green space. Um, we just need to think about how we do that and, and do that in a responsible way. And, and when I say an urban transfer of development rights, and there's some of the best programs for this have been in places like Arlington. And actually, these programs work a lot better in urban areas. Because if you, right now, we have the situation where if you have an area that's, you know, designated green systems, you want to get part of it as a, a park. You have to develop, you know, most of it. And then a tiny sliver of that area that you want as a park is proffered back. But, um, some localities have things where they say, well, if a property owner owns two different parcels, that the same person owns both, then you can just transfer that, they can transfer those development rights from the one piece they own to the other piece that they own. And then, um, and then they would have the ability to develop by right, that piece they've transferred the density to. I think that that kind of simple policy, a very limited kind of transfer development rights policy could really benefit us in terms of, in terms of creating parks and urban areas.
So you were focused on, we're talking about development areas, land use, right?
Yeah, development areas, land use, correct. And in particularly the open space and green systems, part where it's, is talking about that in the development areas, land use piece.
So let's go through this on a little more micro level, um, now that I'm thinking about it, if you guys are okay with this.
That's fine.
And just kind of, because you will get to, we'll get to that piece of it, but I don't want to skip over a bunch of stuff if there's things. So, and it's good to maybe just restate this, so bear with me. So starting at the beginning on page two, right, we've got objectives. We talk about the context. Major findings and trends. I thought those major findings and trends were, were helpful. Talks to things like, reusing existing parking lots, et cetera, things like that. And so I'm just going to roll through these and if you guys are like, stop there, I had a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think those are great.
Denser form of development protects the natural environment while supporting our climate action goals. It's all kind of integrated, tied together. And then we establish the development areas. Zone plan with recommendations for land use. Putting the land use tools together. The land use categories, community design guidelines, activity centers and employment districts. Let's talk a minute about activity centers and land use guidance. Any concerns or comments about activity centers? Future land use map. Categories and designations. I remember the night we went through this, a lot of detail.
I did wonder on that. I know that there will be links to see things, but it, it would really be nice to be able to make out some of that. And I wondered if this is more of a graphic thing, if it could be chopped up into smaller pieces and blown. It's kind of a pain like.
You're talking about the flume? You're talking about the flume?
Yes, I'm just talking about, yeah, the future land use map. At this format, it's really hard to make out much of that. It's just a bunch of colors, really.
I agree. Yeah, we struggle with that.
And I just feel like just like chopping it is.
Or even have the key on a separate sheet or something, but, you know, across the bottom.
As a real estate. You just can't make it out. It's more like.
Thank you. We'll we'll let let give it, give us a challenge. We'll try and make it better.
Any concerns about any of the land use categories, green space, public land, institutional, industrial? And diving just a little bit into the uses.
Well, I.
Yep.
I don't remember where this is right now. I'm sorry. I know it's in this chapter, but it was. It's in my comments somewhere, but when we were talking about office and commercial and stuff, with the way I was reading it, it still felt like harkening back to like the old office parks, you know, like Peter Jefferson Place where you go there and you can't get a sandwich. You you can't get any errands done. You have to get in your car and drive, you know, or Fontaine Research Park, you know, like gotta drive all, you know, I used to work there. It was like, it was like twenty minutes just to get to the down the driveway to the end. Like, damn, I forgot my lunch. It it just, it still felt like the old model of segregated. Workers are here and then, you know, conveniences are over here.
Well. Yeah. And that was the office flex, research and development, light industrial section. Page nineteen, I was encouraged to see that it had residential. Non-residential uses such as commercial, retail and institutional. That's kind of what you were speaking to, I guess, right? Industrial does not have a secondary use of residential, right? Correct?
Don't think so, but commercial, I thought did.
Well, light industrial, office flex, research and development, light industrial does. Industrial does not have residential.
And most most of the things do, and I think that that's one of the things that I appreciate about this section and how talk up mixed use now. One thing is talking it up, the other is, are we going to get the results?
Oh, microphone, sorry.
Sorry, it was a, thank you. Yeah, we, one of the things that I appreciate about this section is how we we put in that mixed use throughout a lot of the categories. You know, not the industrial, which is appropriate, but and and we talk it up and we say the right things. The question there again is, is are we going to see the results, right? I mean, there's the challenges of getting, that we're seeing now. Trying to get that office space or any kind of commercial space into the any kind of residential or mixed use neighborhood neighborhood plans that we've had that, you know, right now they're reverting back to almost pure residential. And the call out is market driven, so it's difficult, but we should think through that and how can we help correct that curve? Are there some incentives that can come into play?
If I may, along those lines, when I was reading, it's it is emphasizing, you know, adaptive reuse or convert it. You maybe have a residence and you're converting it to a round four commercial and upper residential, but then it still brings in that thing about the firewall and all of that stuff that you have to do. Well, no one built that building like that originally, so now it's cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
So if the county really wants to see that happen, is there like a small business grant or something that at a fund that somebody could do that? That fireproof separation of floors that they have to do. Otherwise, it's just not going to happen. So it sounds good, but then it says, as long as we have all of the requirements we would have in place had you built it that way originally.
Yeah, I I say this, yeah, I think we all have to some degree, and I say this, so one is complementing what we've done here, but I think it is a good plan. But it goes back to, again, the measurables and 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 not only being able to measure it, but also being able to react. It's okay, we're not, if we're not achieving what we want to achieve, how can we curb that? It's just, again, it's just, it's not a specific comment on the, on the, yeah.
I think your your basic criticism is of the flum in some respects.
I I I don't know that it's a criticism about it as much as.
Or observation.
Yeah, it's an ob- observation of of real wor- world. And when we build in our our, how we're measuring certain outcomes that we want to achieve, like mixed use, like, you know, more low-income housing or whatever it might be. When we build in how we're going to measure this, also be thinking about how do we can measure it, but then do we have a plan to curb the outcome if it's not achieving what we want to do, the higher density that we've talked about and so forth, just something to keep in mind.
Maybe related to that, I was trying to remember, there was a comment, I think, maybe it was by the Board of Supervisors, they were talking about the reality of, well, I guess it was the study that said there's there's plenty of capacity in the development area to build out for twenty years, fifteen to twenty years. But it depends on efficient and high-density development. And the question is, is the framework here efficient to provide that level of density, which is kind of what we've been talking about, I guess.
Just a thought. I I just come back, so the build-out analysis is based on like the plan, the cop, the designations in the conference.
Yeah.
So he he comes back and says, yeah, you've got enough to accommodate twenty years of growth. I think Luis is sort of hammering a little bit of this stuff or, you know, coming back to the, okay, great, but how is that actually going to work? Especially in these areas where you're really trying to create something walkable, something dense, something mixed use to help accomplish that. And I appreciate, thank you for challenging us as we come out of this plan for making sure that we are working on those those tools to actually make this vision happen.
Yeah, I think it's it's for everyone as we structure the plan, as we execute the plan and just keeping our eye that, hey, we've we've we squander a lot of density, right, and from the twenty fifteen plan. How do we avoid that?
I have kind of a parallel question related to all of this. It's not really in the meat of the document, but it's a question for staff. How how are schools identified and reviewed and discussed within each of these land use categories? Where's the connection to to that?
So AC forty-four doesn't include specific guidance for where to locate schools.
Right.
These have been identified over, a lot of those sites have been identified by the county over the years. Sometimes that's been a part of a large rezoning project. One that comes to mind is North Point, there was a school site that was identified there and and preserved. I don't think they're still looking at that site in particular. This question came up recently. We were talking about it internally with some other staff about schools guidance. What does heavily factor into the schools is the development pipeline. The that is the projects that are reviewed and approved but not yet built or being or or are being reviewed. Because that increase in units can be calculated and converted to projected student student enrollment.
Yeah.
So our our schools, they're they're constantly looking at those numbers to make sure that they're aware of what is coming. And we've also had some conversations with them about the build-out analysis, going back to like phase two, phase three, and what the implications are for the school systems.
Okay.
So obviously, if we if we are achieving higher density within the development areas, you know, that will further boost the student population.
Yeah, and that that gets to kind of a bigger point that I guess I've been thinking a lot about, and that is how are we being proactive? So whether it's being, you know, if we're talking about how we got to maximize density in the development, are we going to build, 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 we're going to go higher, we're going to add square footage, et cetera, et cetera. Are we keeping up with that from a transportation standpoint, from a school standpoint, from an infrastructure, water and sewer standpoint? And how are all of those caught, those strategic plans aligned with this plan? And how does that process come about? Does it need to be mentioned here?
Well, interestingly enough, I I remember when a young planner here, the previous conference plan at the time had all these types of standards written into the conference plan, whether it was, you know, how many buckabouts should be on a school playground or lease fire response times.
Yeah.
The model here is not do that. The these different departments, as they develop their plans, police and rescue for their response times and stuff like that. Those are in those documents that the board works with on different timeframes than the comp plan. They're referenced often, you'll see that in the community facilities section, you know.
Yeah.
And a lot of those are culling off of the land use plan to sort of generate where and how much they need to respond, whether it's schools or water demand or, so they were deriving a population projection from the the land use plan that helps serve the to sort of what if you will, create the demand for those services, but how those services are provided? Whether they're going to provide three swing sweat sets or four swing set.
Yeah, no, I understand.
That that's something that is more to the provider of that type of service, whether it's parks and parks and rec or schools.
That makes, that all makes sense. I I think as we think through this, as a as a county, having the integration of those plans together is going to be some, I don't know, it's not for tonight, but to look at how those are integrated and how those are connected. So when you're talking to RWSA, you don't have an activity center that's located in an area that they're not going to serve for another twenty-five years or whatever it is, right, that there is some kind of.
There it was that kind of thought that happened.
Yeah.
And of course, you know, the community facilities chapter speaks to a lot of those things and all of those ones. Then there are references out of that to those plans, which will hopefully end up, I think that we've got the exhaust. Excuse me, I think we have an exhaustive list of those types of plans that are referenced in the appendix of this plan here.
Great.
Can I?
Yeah.
So so you do have the transportation challenges section here, which is paging, so it's eight, eight. Yeah. And I think that lays out some of the things that you were talking about. In terms of how do we coordinate, align, there are different different entities. This one talks obviously a lot about VDOT. But there is an opportunity to discuss how we coordinate and and how these plans can inform one another.
Yeah.
So maybe some of that language is what perhaps is not there in some key places, even even in the first chapter or the first part, wherever.
Part one.
Part one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not really a chapter, it's just part one. Perhaps some of that is in terms of the how the plan, how the various plans, it was a transportation plan or the school plans, how they're informing one another for for growth and development, because obviously if we're going to, if we're going to create these this these centers, these vibrant centers, we're going to need to have transportation that goes there, right? There's it's going to have to be tied into to capital development plans and so forth.
Yeah, and the the beauty of the links, the hot links, you know, if there's a way to tie those together. So you can be looking as a an applicant or as a developer, whoever's looking at this, and you're looking at, you know, the relationship between centers and transportation on page twenty-nine, and you're like, okay, well, here's a connection to VDOT's six-year plan or whatever that ends up being that helps to connect those. You know, it's like, it's a good tool.
And I'll just say, especially if the documents are internal to the county.
Yeah.
That's easier to do. Documents external to the county, much harder to maintain live links that go to those.
Yeah.
But I will just, you know, to, because I know this point, you know, obviously, you remember when we started writing this, we tried to like try and keep these things as discreetly as possible so that the issues could be sort of dealt with. Transportation and land use, I mean, they're so linked because the roads are the form, the backbone of the land use plan. So that one is a definite integration that we wrestled with mightily if we were writing the document.
Yeah.
Those other ones that are more service-oriented, the public services, schools, fire, what have you. Most of those are in the community facilities chapter.
Yep, got you. So I'm on page thirty-six, but I don't want to jump ahead. Any other? Concerns past the centers?
Yeah, are you just doing big-ticket items now?
I'm just rolling through the whole document. We've got two hundred pages to go through and just hitting if there's, not rushing it, but if there's things there that we want to touch on.
Say thirty-six, do you mean? Definitely what the next page is versus.
I mean, the one that's written on the page, the one that's in front of us.
But they have different sections.
You'll you'll notice that the page numbering resets for the sections.
Yeah, so what section are you on?
Eastern development. I'm just still in development area.
You're still in development.
Yeah. Page thirty-six of that.
So just make sure you know the chapter, you know, that we're still with it.
Development area.
Speaking of which, the number, I I wish you had like a letter and like a dash before the number so that the so that someone could say like, you know, go to A thirty-six or, you know, B.
That's that's a very good point, and that's something we've discussed too. Actually, I'm scrolling back to the table of content, so.
Go like that.
Something like this, where we have some letters that precede the numbers, so I I think we'll amend these page numbers to make it easier to navigate.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Okay, so I'm in development areas, land use still, page thirty-five, thirty-six, protecting and increasing access to nature.
And and that was what I was speaking to before, just to say is that, you know, it's nice to say when we want to protect increased access to nature, but how do you go about that, right? We need some solid methodologies for how we do that that's different from what we're doing now, because what we're doing now is not doing that. So I mentioned some of the the tools that we could use when we get in the parks and recs section. I think that there's some new items that are proposed there that I think could be very useful. But I I think that this is, I think we really need to think about how.
So part of that is also on page forty, right?
In the implementation that we've, yeah.
The objectives, page forty, right there.
Exactly.
All right, moving to rural area land use. Yeah.
We skipped a couple of things. It's real, real quick. Guess it'd be on page thirty-nine, D A L U two. I had just a recommendation to put, try to find my notes here. Oh, living wage jobs, so increase the number of living wage jobs for that descriptor, and then on D A L U three, let me find my notes here. All right, guys. I said equitably invest. They put equity in front of that, and then I think that is the same one that's talking about transportations, that correct, I'm flipping back and forth. So talking about multimodal transportation? Or is that D A L U four? All right, I'm getting there now. Okay, so I think it's in D A L U four. No, it's it's three, I'm sorry. It's talking about multimodal transportation quite a bit and kind of pushing towards that. And it was just a question that we've talked about before around do we think we can actually get there, right? Like, when you have bus service, it takes an hour, right, to get from point A to Walmart? How do you actually drive folks in development to encourage or incentivize multimodal if the infrastructure is not really there in place to really support that? So it's still a looming question. I know we've talked about many, many times, but the language hasn't really changed, and so am I taking that as we're just good with the way it is? Or is that something that really needs to be explored a little bit deeper before we get to the final? So. It puts a heavy dependency on multimodal, which to me, I take that as bus systems and transit and so forth, and we just don't have it right now. And do we see that in the next twenty years changing substantially, right?
Well, yes, we hope we are working on that. I mean, there's the Carta effort at the NPO to Charlottesville, Alamo Regional Transit Authority and finding ways to fund that. Hopefully, when we get to the transportation section, I think, again, this may be the one where we bled the most between chapters, if you will, with some of the. again, this may be the one where we bled the most between chapters, if you will, where some of the transportation stuff sort of wraps into this, because you sort of can't have these centers if you don't have that sort of supporting transportation infrastructure. A lot more of the details of transportation infrastructure that we hope to provide. You'd find in that latter chapter, that's what we're gonna get to in a second. So maybe we go through that and if there's something that you wanna it's missing here, I guess there's some of the details about the trans transit stuff or you're gonna find there's there's a there's an objective and multiple actions behind trying to achieve transit.
May maybe it's drilling down, going back to the metrics piece. Maybe it's something there that just says, okay, this is not just a dream. We're actually going to track it, and this is how we're defining success. I think that's the part that's really missing for that. That thing I read something about, you know, a goal or an action might be to have the ability to eliminate parking for some developments. That ain't happening. Not right now, right? Until we get to that point. So what does a baby step look like, right? To say that, hey, we're defining success in that way. I think if there's ever a point to where that's really important, it's going to be in that multimodal part, because it seems so far stretched. Where if it seems like it's a fantasy, I might even pay attention to it, right? So like, what are where are those baby step increments perhaps that we can drill down on and say in the next five years, I hope we can do X, Y, and Z. Next ten, you know, that makes sense.
Yeah, I I would say the metrics thing has come up multiple times tonight. And um so we might as well just have that conversation now. Um, I think, you know, when we get down to the implementation section and the big moves. Our strategy for tracking whether or not we're we're achieving what the plan is, is really tracking some trends and indicators of the big moves. The big moves are are supposed to reflect the compendium of multiple actions and objectives as opposed to creating something that we track for each objective. That there are, if you'll look through the document, there are a lot of objectives. And for us to have measurable, make our position is for us to have measurable indicators for each objective. And how are we doing on that? Frank with you, that creates a lot of staff time. I don't I don't have an analyst on my staff who would just do nothing but track the metrics of stuff. And and maybe it wouldn't be his full time or her full time job, but it would be more than time than I have allotted for my staff right now. So we tried to do this with the big moves, sort of represent broadly over twenty years. And we're going to revisit these things, you know, we rewrite the the comp plan or sooner if we need to. Sort of say, hey, we're moving in the right direction. One of the other aspects of this plan is trying to tie the um, big moves and these objectives that are in the plan and the actions with them to the board strategic plan. And that has even more detailed metrics. It's going to happen that. So when the board says, hey, we're going to try and get these things done, those are going to have. Um, and it's been what they've been doing with the strategic plan right now. And the spear report that associated with it, hey, we we took on this action, it's a five year plan, we're, you know, we're supposed to be getting it. And how are we making progress on those? What are these things that we're working on this year? So again, I think the strategy is to use the strategic plan where the board's actually putting money on that action to say, hey, you know, we increased X, Y, or whatever it is, we achieved, you know, you know, PDQ. But for the plan itself, for the comp plan, it's the big moves and a celestial collection of some like vehicle miles traveled. And are we getting that? Is that decreasing? That's a proxy for whether or not we're getting more people onto transit and using building more uh bike facilities to enable people to get out of the cars more.
You know, I look at this item here, and I think what would be really useful would be um I don't know what you'd call them, multimodal dead zones, like places you cannot, you cannot reach those areas by multimodal traffic. I mean, maybe this is more a suggestion for the transportation section, but there are certain areas that you can, you can't really leave those areas or get to those areas. And knowing where those dead zones are would be would be very helpful and tracking them over time, hopefully this the size of those decrease over time.
Can I restate a little bit of what she said? Because metrics are a big part of, you know, it's been what we've been talking about. We're going to continue talking about the measurement. So what you're saying is that from a um kind of a sort of a staffing feasibility standpoint, the the metrics that are being measured in the for the against the comp plan are the seven.
Big moves.
Big moves. The county is looking at a more into more minutia in the five year plan, the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine plan. And that measurement tool is partly the spear report.
Yes, sir.
Right? So just mapping all that out. And the spear report just came out on Wednesday, right? And I think this past Wednesday or recently.
And and to be able to use this document to help feed the
Yeah.
Strategic plan is something we've been really working a lot with the um, you know, offices of um getting laid. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, to to try and make that happen, try. Look, go back to our last plan, nine hundred pages, so many actions.
Yeah.
You know, you almost have to like, where do you start with something like that?
Yeah.
And so I think, you know, we're trying to actually try to make this more actionable.
I I agree.
Down, getting these actions and then trying to like there'll be other places, other things that will feed that into the strategic plan, but at least this being a good source of stuff that we're going to try and get done for the with strategic plan.
Yeah, I think that all makes sense. And I figured there was a reason behind the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine strategic plan tying into the primary year that this was being drafted, right? There were things that were probably learned from each. I would want, I would suggest that maybe we not lose track of even though we're looking at the big moves, that we not lose track of other things that we want to measure. And even if we don't have the capacity, the staffing capacity, at least we have a list. And on that list, we could prioritize those. And maybe some of them are already in the strategic plan and we're good. But there may be some that pop out that might be worth considering that we're not actually tracking, right? So they're there, we're aware of them. We just don't have the bandwidth right now to track it, which is the reality of our world.
And we've come up with a list of of you know, it's it's not just one or two things for each big move. It's a it's a basket of stuff. We have a list of that. And I think our real intent is to try and look. First of all, do we agree that these are the seven? We just had, we had a seventh added, you know, a little bit ago.
Right.
So, you know, I don't know if we get to the end of this. Is there eight now? Or do we take one away? Whatever it might happen, we we need that.
Yeah.
Then we'll adopt the plan. We're we're there and we'll, we're going to work on those metrics to to really try and make sure that there are things that are representative of those big moves. And again, the big moves are representative of many, not all, but many of the objectives and actions in the plan.
So one that, not to jump us head to the next category of rural area protection, but one that stood out to me was the dark sky. You know, I mean, I I'm, that's one thing I really appreciate about where we live is what the work that's been done by the county and by the university to maintain a dark sky here. But there's really no kind of metric that measures like a a standard or anything that really kind of helps us identify that here. Maybe there would be in the zoning ordinance that maybe there would be somewhere else. But just thinking about that is one example, and we don't have to skip all the way down, sorry, uh banner, whoever's doing that. But um just that's one example in my mind that should be at some point measured. Right? And maybe it is somewhere, but we should have it on the list.
I was here. Uh, I wanted to show this page.
Oh, yeah.
Because dark skies is mentioned in multiple places, uh, one of those being the cultural resources chapter. So there's an image here that uh represents the Bortles scale. Um, so that's the brightness of the nighttime sky. So I I get your point in talking about metrics, you know, it it when it comes to something like dark skies, there are measurements that you can take to evaluate how we're doing in different areas. So.
Perfect. Yeah.
But also like tree canopy you talked about.
Yeah.
Like from, sorry. You talked about tree cover, which is great. Um, you can measure tree canopy, you know, like so that could be a future goal to measure. We want the development areas to be livable and attractive, and they should have good tree cover. So we could map the tree cover in those areas and then measure it over time. Is it gaining? Is it losing?
It's one of the, it's in there. It's like ragu.
And so
We 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 It's in there.
With the mushrooms under the Parmesan.
Yeah, we we, again, we we with this, this, as we're working back and forth on our, I'll have to give you this much. We're trying to be, we've heard this, I got a lot. And and I personally think it's important. If we don't have metrics, how do we know whether or not the goals we put in the plan, we're we're moving them forward? So we appreciate that. We're trying to get to it. And we do have a list.
And we know, we and we do appreciate that a lot of these things are here, because we've been talking about it for a long time. And you guys obviously have been incorporating it. Appreciate that. Um, I would say, because it can get overwhelming, right? You're going to measure everything. How many staff do you have? And you got a lot of other stuff to do. You do have partners that are actually very capable in this community.
That's a great.
So I, so I do think that you should look at that. I mean, the university is probably a fact, we're doing some of that uh as well in terms of our dark skies and what that can be expanded. We have students, they could do these things. So so there are resources out there and I would just, but and these would be some great projects. Uh, even student projects. And so anyway, just some to keep in mind. It's not all, it doesn't all have to be.
Thank you.
So moving on to rural area land use, which we've kind of already gotten into, go through the objectives. Context, major findings and trends. Rural area land use approach.
So
Done, I'm just.
I was just gonna say, starting on page two. I'm okay with all the, I'm okay with all this, all the objectives, all of these, these are fine. I don't know if anyone had any other issues.
I'm on page four.
Um, so um, there's a map. I thought it was on rural area, actually rural, maybe it was page two. Can you go back to page two? They have it wrong. Where's the one with the the map of forest cover?
Oh, it's on page uh six.
Oh, there it is. I guess I I had it written wrong. Okay, so I don't find the um, the the forest cover map very helpful. Um, I think that we should replace that um with with the map that's in the biodiversity um report that has um
Forest blocks.
Blocks. Because a lot of that forest is is really fragmented forest and may just be all Bradford pear um or some other invasive species. It's just
Atlantis forest, we have lots.
Atlantis forest, you know. Some of those are just pine plantations that aren't really, you know.
Well, they could would be happening.
So, so I mean, I think just swapping that out for the for the forest block map would be would be helpful.
Rural area land use plan, page seven, recommended supporting land use goals. Rural interstate interchanges.
Okay, so um I do have something on interchanges. Um, I think the language here is too vague and
Wait, would we go, do we, I'm sorry, we went, what page are we?
We are on page eight of the rural.
I was only made it to page four.
Oh, sorry. Do you have other comments? Before begging.
It's just really, it's not that important, but the um I questioned some of the statistics on rural ag lands. I looked up the recent reports. I don't know if this was just written a while ago and like, you know what I mean? This plan's been going for so long. So I just, I just gave you a link to the updated ag data. As we, it's saying it's everything's remained relatively stable. And I'm saying, no, it hasn't. It's declined. And it's, here's the link to the ag statistical report. Anyway, you can look that up later.
Okay, thank you.
Rural interchanges, rural interstate interchanges, development.
Yes, so so as I was saying, I think I think one of the problems that I have with this section is I think it's vague with insufficient guardrails. Um, we should say upfront that we'll only consider uses that are consistent with the goals of the rural area. I think target industries is too broad, since some of those would not be appropriate and would basically constitute an expansion of the development area, which we said we were not going to do at this time. I mean, I do think, um, speaking of Yancy, for example, I think there there is value in looking at um you know, we have a big industrial property there. I think industrial is too broad a category for the rural area. I think we need to look at reclassifying some of these to come up with classifications, land use categories that are more appropriate for the rural area designation. You know, for example.
Like it's a some kind of rural processing facility or something that has to do with rural land use.
Yeah, correct. When when we, you know, if we went back up to the development area, we had this nice little map with all the different colors of all the different uses we had, you know, then for for industrial and for for offices and and so forth. At some point, I know that we, there's Colin here for a um for rural area plan. I would like to get to the point where we have those colors for the rural area as well. Um, where we can talk, we don't have to just say industrial, we can say agricultural support industrial maybe, or you know.
Something that indicates there's a reason why it's there. And that that is the appropriate place for that type of support.
Yeah, yeah. And then and I direct you to the last sentence of this section. I think it's what we're trying to sort of speak to that. And and please note that this doesn't change the flung for this area. It just sort of says hey, I think because as I've been here, I keep hearing, you know, we've got all kinds of issues out there, um, because it's not um, we're sort of, we're in a bit of a crossroads, right? We've got the land that's zoned out there. We've got um you know, development that's been happening and we do nothing, we can't manage it. And so this is a try, this is an attempt to manage it. And if if we go through an intensive process and look at this area and decide it's perfect the way it is, that's certainly an outcome. An outcome could be to try and you know, further restrict it one way or another. But the real intent was these two interchanges are areas where we've got a mixture of old zoning out there. And I think from a planning perspective, we recognize the it's a problem for one reason or another. We've got uses out there, commercial uses that are hooked to water for fire, but not for other things. And then some that aren't provided with sewer, you know, it it mall might be an option out of this thing. You go out there and you study it and make no changes, but
Be an option?
Uh, nothing.
Oh, yeah.
Of the mall set, you know, nothing happens.
Yeah.
But that was the point really for this this section.
Well, I I think that, you know, and because I know there's a lot of concern in cause they particularly about Nancy, and I think there's some some feeling, well, if we just don't look at it, if we don't talk about it, um, it'll be better off. Um, I don't agree with that.
One philosophy.
I I think that I think we do need to look at it. And I think we need to proactively plan for what we do want to see there. Uh, I just think we do need some guardrails not to create excessive fear in the community about, you know, about what might be there. You know, are we talking data centers? Or we're talking about, you know, DuPont Chemical Factory there instead? I mean, well, what, you know, like we need to be, we need to decide proactively. And and I think that those uses should be ones that that are supportive of the rural area at this particular agency. Um, you know, ones that support agr- agritourism, that support um that
That's in here.
Yeah. So I mean, but I think some of these, this, there's wishy washy language in here that says um, like it is possible that no change, you know, like there's, it just leaves it a little too open.
If you look at, uh, maybe that's the case. If you look at page twelve, rural area land use twelve, objective. Raloo seven, uh, point three. Update, review and update existing commercial and industrial zoning for properties within the rural areas. This process should prioritize land use and zoning opportunities to support agriculture, silvicultural related to support.
Yeah, and I agree with that completely.
Yeah.
I think that that's perfectly, that's perfectly.
And then there's seven point five talks about rural small area plans.
Could I suggest that the, so so the last sentence that you pointed out to Michael? I think the, there is some ambiguity in that sentence, and it's the and. And so it's it's one sentence. But it is possible no changes or recommended land use would be identified, comma, and that only land use consistent with the, but is that it is possible. So where that starts. So what I would recommend is that it's two sentences. And you start by saying only land use consistent with the rural area designation, you know, mainly agriculture, forestry, etc., would be recommended. Period. It is possible that no changes in recommendation, in recommended land use
Right.
Would be identified.
Period.
Period.
Like it. And then the next sentence starts with something like, you know, if changes are be proposed, they should be consistent with the rural area.
Well, or or I guess I moved that that part up, said only
Oh.
Land use consistent with the rural area designation, you know, mainly agriculture
Right.
Will be considered.
Tanya, Tanya, ask you what you said.
I have a question for Steph. When when is the data center, like ordinance or just guardrails, where is that on our roadmap in terms of handling? Or discussing? Coming soon.
Can I get back to you in two seconds on that?
And I'm asking because this section is silent on it, or I remember reading about in the development area, it's like, hey, perhaps you can make it by right if it's an industrial use, but, um, do you want to be silent on it? Maybe the answer is yes, maybe it's no, but, all you do is read Virginia Business Magazine and they're popping, there's proposals in Southern and Southwest Virginia coming all the time. And so I don't think we'll be immune to that. So is this what we're going to be proactive or reactive on in this document? And if you want to plead the fifth, that's fine too.
All right. Anything else, um, on rural area land use?
Um, I do have one more thing. Um, we've already talked about this, this a little bit, but on page 10, um, I believe it's on page 10, if my numbers are correct. It, there's a section that talks about transfer development rights.
What number are you talking about?
It is a two point five.
Two point five. Yeah.
Second box.
Oh, yeah.
I'm okay with ascending areas. I think we might want to add green systems, um, areas that we, we would like as parks. I think we should remove any discussion of receiving areas. And I, and furthermore, I think that this, this whole item needs a lot more discussion as Karen has, has already said. My recommendation is, is actually that we send this to the natural heritage committee as one first stop. Maybe Karen could join us for that meeting and, and, and get some more input and discussion on this. Before we flesh this out, I think this should be left rather vague in nature, um, while we, you know, it, it needs more work. Our losses say, um, we probably shouldn't limit this transfer development rights as, as only a rural program. Because as I said, some of the most successful implementations of transfer development rights in Virginia have been urban programs. So.
Points. So that's a follow-up. Okay. Anything else in the rural area land use?
Um, I wanted staff to say a little bit more on page nine. RALU two, two point one. You wanted to reduce the amount of acreage used for residential lots. I wanted to hear, I know we talked about this with the recent development where they were trying to get a few, you know, rearrange their rural lots. We had a long conversation about whether the laws could be cleared or what the footprint was, but can you guys say what your intent was? With this one, what you're trying to achieve? And then I could see if it achieved it.
I think, you know, Scott Clark has talked to me about this several times. I think the basic thing is that, so with your development rights on those parcels, you can have up to five.
Right.
And of those five parcels, they can take up to 31 acres. And we're trying, I think Scott's point is to make that 31 acre maximum smaller. So instead of having five, five acre lots, you'd have five, three or four acre lots. In other words, try and make more area that would be reserved for the larger.
Okay. That, that's what I thought. It just wasn't clear. I don't know if you can, maybe it's obvious. We, we, we. Thing in like one sentence.
I can say this much, we've written that one three or four times. So, um, I won't say it's perfect now, but it's not, it's been, it hasn't not, not been through this process.
If you wanted to explain it better on the preceding page, you have some real estate underneath those maps, you could write another paragraph explaining that. Yeah. I don't know. Like then, then it, then it would be like, see this objective then, because it is complicated.
I mean.
We could just delete that action and be easier altogether.
I have a lot of actions I would like you to delete because I can't tell what they are doing.
Well, I mean, if, I mean, I, I think there are, I mean, my only issue with this, I think we could go further than that. I think, you know, the currently, the way that our zoning is, is set up in the rural area, it really encourages these large slot subdivisions. And I think that that's what this is getting at, is opening the possibility for more smaller lots that at least have the potential to be somewhat more affordable than these 21 acre.
Yeah. Like if somebody is, if somebody gets, let's say there's a bunch of 21 acre lots. It's the, I, PEC said this once many years ago, it's like too small to farm and too big to mow. You know, so people end up with all this land and they're not farming it. I mean, I, my family had a 22 acre farm, so don't get me wrong, you can farm it, but, um, they tend not to. So, you know, like, would it be better to have smaller, even smaller lots than what it says here? And then more, you know, open space or, you know, forest habitat or whatever.
I mean, I.
Maybe we don't have to say, it, it doesn't say what it, what, what the size is right now, does it?
I mean, maybe the issue is that this is too specific, what I, what I'd like.
Yeah. It just says go smaller.
I mean, I, I agree with it and, you know, I agree with it in the technical sense. I think we need other strategies for, I think we need to go more than past this. You know, elsewhere we talk about, well, we don't have authorization for clustering or, or ordinance. But what we do have is we could offer to people that if someone said, well, I have this many 21 acre lots that I can make and I have this many development right lots that I could make. How about, could I just, you know, do, you know, five acre lots, um, you know, and, and not do these 21 acre lots and do the same number of them that I would have done in 21 acre lots and leave a really big residual? We don't have a mechanism for them to do that right now.
No. And the last development that we struggled with was a lot of working with staff to try to reduce the amount of road acreage. Because when you have all these lots, you have to put, get a long, you know, driveway to get in there. So now you're impacted and habitat fragmentation is much greater.
I mean, there's the.
We don't have a way for them to do that. We don't have a way for someone to come in and say, how about if I just, you know, have the same amount of land, but it's, I've got, you know, five, five acre lots and the rest is conservation land. Great.
Yeah. We need a mechanism for that and that is not in here.
Right.
And, and I think, you know, you know, basically what you're talking, what I'm talking about is kind of what Bendoran did, but, but maybe a little better than that.
But, well, and it's just an interesting point I'll make quickly, or maybe it's not interesting, but I think somewhere under all of this was the idea that by having these large lots, it would discourage development. But in a area where it's, people really, really want to be in Alamo County and the amount of money that flows to Alamo County, it doesn't discourage. Plenty of people can still afford a big piece of property and a big house on it. So.
Well.
It's not discouraging.
Well, and the worst part about the 21 acre piece is that you can maximize the development rights, uh, you can maximize development on, on what used to be a farm.
Right.
And you still, at the end of the day, qualify for land use valuation. So, I mean, I think in a perfect world, if you maximized all the development you could do, you would be at an acreage that would be too small to qualify for land use.
Well, that's a really good point. I mean, I've been critical of the policy that like, I'll grow some hay Lonnie and I'll sell it to you. You grow some hay and sell it to me. We've now grown a crop and we've had a sale that we can register. Then we put our hay in the backfield to rot because neither of us needs any hay. So you can create a false agricultural economy in that way. Lot of hay cutting. There's definitely people using it. I'm just saying.
No, I mean, it's possible we can address some of this when we get to the rural area plan, which I, I certainly hope that that happens. But I mean, I just hope we can do more than this little item in here does.
All right. Let's roll, roll on to transportation.
Okay. We just say one more thing really quick. Sorry. Um, Lonnie brought this up earlier about the fact that we just have like RA as our zoning for rural area. If you take a look at a place like James City County, they have rural area, but then they also have another designation for like special conservation. So where this area, it's rural, but then this land is also very high quality, high value habitat. And that gets extra protections under it. It's still rural, but it's like rural conservation.
Right. Yeah.
Right now. And we haven't done that. And I don't think we have to have a rural area plan done, but I think we could suggest that we might consider an additional designation for the RA that was, uh, recognizing the unique conservation value of some of the properties. And that could also be property that was, you know, significant groundwater recharge area or something, you know, is providing additional environmental services.
Yeah. I mean, I, I actually would recommend that we adopt both a conservation designation and an agricultural designation as many localities have. Um, and I actually forged an article to all of you earlier today about, um, in Chesapeake, there was a, a property owner that came to, to their government and said, hey, I would like you to rezone my residential property to agricultural because I don't want that potential hanging over the property. And I think that that would be a great, um, thing for us to have in Alamo County, if only voluntary, because it would be less, um, on risk than a conservation easement, but still allow flexibility. So I think that there are, as I said, we can shelve that until we get into the, the rural area plan if we have to, but I really think that those are things we need to look at.
Yeah. So there could be like an RA, an RC rural conservation. I think we definitely, other localities are doing, have done this already.
I know Falkir County has a designation.
Yeah. So could we just add an action that says, consider an additional conservation, uh, zoning for the, for some areas in the rural area in the future, or create that new class. Then when we do the rural area plan, we could consider where we would do that, but for now, at least just to recognize that there's other kinds of rural zoning besides just RA.
Yeah. I was looking at where that might fit. I think it would be under RALU three somewhere. Maybe, I don't know if it would fit within any of those existing ones, but that might be a place to put it.
Yeah.
The goal.
It'd fit there as well as any, a couple of other, yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Let's roll transportation. I think we've tackled the majority of the difficult stuff, but this stuff's also important, of course. So transportation objectives. Introduction. Major findings and trends. I, I should be able to find it, but is, is there a discussion about urban street standards in here?
Stuff about work with VDOT.
That's what I, I remember, but it seemed like it was vague and I, I think the board was interested in having more detail on it.
Page 18, I think that's where their standards, um, talks about um, street design standards, VDOT has adopted, uh,
Maybe that's it. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
It's also page 17 as well.
On page 17.
Yeah.
Yes, 17 and 18.
Well.
I think this revision also talked more about working with VDOT than the previous one, if I remember correctly.
Yes, we did.
Working more with VDOT directly.
Yeah.
So I think that was good. Any?
Yeah. I have a, I have a, um, on page 10. Um, there's a language change there. Um, there's sentence, um, biking and walking on rural roads does occur often for recreation or exercise rather than to access jobs and other resources. These are valid use of roadways. However, pedestrian safety can be an issue due to limited road widths. I think we should change the wording of that. It sounds apologetic, like, and these uses occur, you know, but even the, they're, you know, it almost, it, it doesn't sound right. I'd propose that we change that too. Biking, running and walking does occur on rural roads for many reasons, often for recreation, exercise, to visit neighbors or to access resources in crossroads communities. Pedestrian safety on narrow roads can be an issue, particularly when roads are improved without these existing uses being considered. Planning for transportation needs to consider these valid existing uses. So that, that encompasses the same idea without being apologetic about the idea that people are using these for these uses.
Do you mind sending us that language?
I can.
Thank you. All right. Rolling through, I'm, I'm on page 16, but I don't want to skip ahead. If anybody has any tools for multimodal transportation planning. How it will be implemented on page 18. And the implementation. Development areas and implementation. For rural areas on page 23. Any, um, comments or concerns on the objectives?
I only had a minor comment on page 21, which is before where you jumped to, it just said improve 5.6 dated, objective five. I don't know. It just said improve transit access to the airport. I would like to change that to provide or add. There is no transit access to the airport. So, I mean, you can only improve upon that, I guess, but it just sounded like there were some.
There's the car. Uber. It's Uber. Yeah. Right.
Yeah. Okay. Whatever. Anyway, I, I know I, I lobbied for that last day, but I just wanted us to say like, provide it or, you know. We can go back to where you, ever you were, which.
I'm just cruising through. So implementation rural area, that's 2020, it's sorry, 23.
Um, let me see. I had some, but I don't know if they're worth talking about. Um.
Page 23. Oh, it's 21. It's, uh, transportation 23. There you go.
I just did grammar things on that. They're not worth bringing up.
Yeah. I think if any of us have, I've got a bunch of grammar stuff too. If there's anything we, we can send that. All right. Are we done with, uh, transportation?
Thriving. We're thriving.
I like the color purple. All right. Thriving economy.
Uh, I don't know. Objective six is really pithy.
Objective six.
Reduce barriers to work.
I just saw that.
Participation. I don't know. Say, can you maybe add a few more words to that so that it?
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, page, it's pretty short, even on page 12. Update zoning ordinance to reduce barriers to land use, providing essential support services for workers, childcare and implement. Child, I think childcare is something that should be emphasized and maybe that can be emphasized up there under that first objective.
Essential support for workers. And then it says childcare in parents.
Yeah. I mean, childcare. Maybe it's the world I live in, but it, I'm not, I don't have the young kids, but from what I've heard, childcare is a major issue for this area. So.
Sort of childcare.
Stressing that.
That's right. That's a key point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Help me out. Where, where were we talking about in that place? Uh, we are talking about.
About it. Cause this one.
Objective six, reduce barriers to workforce participation. But then if you look down at, talks about childcare. It's got childcare in parentheses as if it's sort of et cetera, childcare and other stuff. But I think to me, childcare, from what I've heard, needs to be elevated to a higher
Right.
Level.
Yeah.
And maybe that's up front in that first page, to your point about expanding up, objective seven.
Yeah. Cause it's like, what is it about?
Is that clear enough to staff? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Then anything?
Chair, if I could.
Pardon me?
If I could, just a second here. Um, I think, I just want to point out that objective seven in this particular chapter was not included in the link that was provided to you previously. Just a small oversight. What you're seeing on the screen, it has been added to that version. So objective seven may be one that you want to take a, a little bit closer look at just because it wasn't included in the information in your packet.
Oh, 10-4. Thank you.
I had it.
And our tension at six.
Yep.
And six has been.
Six has been reduced.
Reduced.
Right? Six we have is six point one, two, three.
Wait a second. Oh no, six is seven.
And some of the numbering is off. I'm sorry.
What was added then? Cause si- so six is seven. In the new one.
Right. So.
Five is six.
Yeah.
It says fives under ours.
Oh, that's it. There's two number fives, but the content's the same.
Two number five. The content's the same.
The content is the same.
Got it.
They couldn't fool me.
They couldn't.
I mean, I think we all noticed that. You were just testing us, right?
I was. Yes.
All right. Any other comments under thriving economy?
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, where are we?
Driving economy.
Are we in the housing?
Not yet.
Still thriving?
That we finished thriving.
I thought we were throw.
We did not. We are not throw worthy at this point. So, so the only thing that I would, I would say to, this is, it's kind of addressed in the Parks and Rec chapter, but I think it would be nice to have an objective here, a little bit more acknowledgement about the economic value of the recreation economy in Alamo County and not just, um, not just strictly, um, the agricultural economy. I think that that's, I've said it before, but there's other, other places like Roanoke that do this really, really well. And I think that we could do better as a con, as, as a county and, and really acknowledging and supporting the recreation economy. And, oh, so. Also, I think under objective four, TE four. You've got a link to, or a convert, you, you mentioned the Charles, no wait, where is it? County's Economic Development Strategic Plan. And the CACV B. And especially the strategic plan, I mean, I think, I'm sure staff has reviewed this with Emily and others and to make sure that the links are tied and, okay. And the CACV B should also weigh in if they haven't.
I'll just point out to pay, um, page five. Um, the last bold sentence. Variety of outdoor recreation activities, historic resources and other assets.
Yeah.
That bring tourists to our area.
Yeah.
That.
Yeah, there you go, okay. Yeah, it's, it's there, it just doesn't make it into an objective. Well, it does.
Right.
It's, where CACV B is there. Where's, well. Four point three. Yeah, I think, but that, that assumes that, that all the things that we can do are under the umbrella of tourism, right? So I think there's a lot of things we can do for outdoor recreation.
Oh, yeah.
Strictly fall under the.
Agreed.
Umbrella of, of recreation.
Yep.
So I mean, you know, some of those things, um, you know, are things we may need to do, like, you know, evaluating appropriate recreational uses for the rural area, right? A lot of those things require special use permits. Maybe we could come up with performance-based standards for some of those things to decide ways that those can be done by right if they meet certain criteria. So I think there's a lot of things that we could do in terms of encouraging sustainable, low-impact recreation. That we're not doing now that wouldn't fall on the umbrella strictly of, of tourism.
Right, like even, I'll just say this, this is not necessarily low impact, but we could have standards for campgrounds in the rural area because there are some that are great locations that work really well, the neighbors don't mind because of the situation, but this is stuff you could codify. The performance standards, just like we do for, um, home stays. Or farm, farm stands or whatever, yeah, I think we could, could definitely do a better job on that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, even things like, I know that, I don't know if it's still true, but when I was in, in Blacksburg, I know the New River Trail, they used to have places where you could rent a bicycle, like right next to the New River Trail. If the Three Knots Trail ever gets built, um, someone would have to come forward with a special use permit.
It would be, yeah, very expensive for somebody to get a small like bike repair stand or something.
Yeah.
Cause it would be like, oh no, that's not a rural use and blah, blah, blah and.
I'll put this, um, point well taken. We're over here jawboning, was it going to the rural chapter, is it going to the thriving economy chapter? But my, I guess what I, point well taken, Lani, and so let us, um, guess on ourselves where something like that might make sense. We'll make sure that the board knows. One of the things we'll tell the board that you all raised, if there's general, I, I'm sensing there's general consensus in the, the commission that that's what, be what you'd want, so just let us, uh, instead of word smithing it now, let us find something that makes sense.
Sounds good. That sounds good. I'm not committed to what chapter goes in.
We'll just, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. It's, your points we'll take and thank you.
All right, should we bump onto housing? We're about halfway through.
Okay.
One thing on the housing that jumps out to me, and maybe it's in here, does it, does there, is it saying here that the county shall invest in an affordable housing trust fund or some sort of other m- method of achieving objective sevens? It says increase affordable and accessible housing options in the community. I didn't scroll down to the objectives, I just don't, quite honestly, don't remember if that's.
I don't feel like I read that.
I don't think I did either. Promote shared space initiatives, including community. I think, I'm just surprised there isn't something in here that talk, doesn't talk about investing since the county's already started to look into that.
Yeah, the county's spending significantly more funding.
Exactly.
So it seems to be the policy.
Yeah. And it says on objective, uh, five, increase the funding for low and moderate income homeowners to maintain and remain in their existing housing units. And to reduce their energy cost burdens, federal grant, grant funding for housing rehabilitation projects, including with the local energy, blah, 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 blah. We can maybe look at this.
Yeah, I wonder if the objective seven, seven shouldn't start off by saying incentivize and invest or invest and incentivize to increase affordable accessible housing options in the community.
Yeah. That would work. Something in there that talks about incentives and investment.
Right, because we're doing both.
Right.
I have one new action for the end.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. So, do you guys remember I did a little speech last time about aging in place?
Yeah.
And lack of, of for, affordability that you, unless you're very wealthy, I'm sorry, you can't get a assisted living unit in Alamo County. So, um, I thought, I, under objective seven, increase affordable and accessible housing options in the community, especially since we only have one action under it, which I think that's weird. I was suggesting, maybe you could say more about, um, I don't have good language, you guys have to write this. But something along lines of, um, adapt, uh, providing assistance to, for adapting homes to allow aging in place. So that could be a fund, you know, like just like AHIPTA, uh, energy affordability renovations. You could get renovation for a ramp or some rail, uh, railings or a chairlift. It's gonna be, that's a really cheap investment to allow someone to stay in their home versus trying to find a way for them to have an eight thousand dollar a month. Right, so why don't we just write something about that?
Any other additions to the housing implementation piece? Why are some orange and some black?
So those are, uh, coming directly out of Alamo House.
Oh, I got you.
If they added some words to it, you'll see black words in the middle of the orange.
There is a footnote on page fifteen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I had a question going back up to page nine real quick, just making sure we're using the latest data. Let me just get back up there. So page nine, it talks about what is affordable housing? And local housing costs, the bottom left, that paragraph, it starts to talk about with the dollar value equates to for eighty percent AMI and so forth. I thought Dr. Petheus' numbers, I can't remember off the top of my head, I felt like the AMI is now either one twenty-one or one twenty-six. And so just verified that we're using the latest numbers per Dr. Petheus, because if that was the case, then eighty percent AMI is a hundred grand roughly. So it caught my attention, I saw the ninety-seven, so it's just double checking, using the latest numbers.
She, she did review this chapter, but we can bring her attention to that particular section and just double check it with her.
That, that was it for me, that jumped out.
Anything else on housing before we move on to environmental stewardship? It's, I'll just say, I don't know how to solve this issue, but I had an interesting conversation with a neighbor whose family has lived in Sugar Hollow for, for generations and, um, she's, you know, this person is a medical professional in, in Crozay. And she was concerned that, you know, her father wanted to give, give her property to her. But she's very concerned that she won't even be able to afford the property taxes and that she'll have to sell. I think that, you know, that really concerns me, the displacement of people in the rural area. Um, particularly, you know, our minority populations there in the rural area, and, and I think we need to find a way for that not to happen. And I don't know exactly what strategy, wh- what the objective or the action is, but I think we need to find a solution for that. Because it doesn't serve our interest if people have been here generations and are, then are providing important services to the residents of Crozay or end up being displaced.
Well, so, and I've had this conversation with some folks in our church who are multi-generational in rural farms, small farms, and they, they're losing them because they can't afford it. Part of the issue is that in Alamo County, they, so there's a, so you can apply for a reduction, right? But it's on, it, it's not based on your income or it's based on how much assets you have. Well, guess what? The land is your asset. And that's the only asset that many of these families have. Well, our land costs have gone up so much in evaluations. And I believe their limit is like two hundred thousand dollars and it hasn't changed. That's the main issue. And so, if, if, anything, any parcel land is worth two hundred thousand dollars practically. If you have, you know, three or four acres of, of farmland in Alamo County, it's worth over two hundred thousand dollars.
I thought it was higher. I thought that six hundred thousand dollars was the break where you had to pay, pay inheritance.
No, it's, it's a little bit over, like, it's not six hundred, it's, it's, now it's like two, I don't know if any of you have the, the data, but but it's, it's fairly low threshold to, so you can apply for, um, any kind of reduction.
Oh, that's what you're talking about, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, not inheritance taxes, it is, no, it's no. Well, no, it's not just inherited, so what happens is they lose their land because they can't afford to keep paying those, those property taxes.
Property taxes, right.
Right.
Okay, sorry, he started with inheritance.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, this is all bigger conversation.
That's a different, it is a different conversation.
But it's a good point and it's been front and center in a lot of conversations I've had recently. And it's in large part because of our dependence on real estate taxes to cover the revenue, which is, but eleven percent of our revenue is from commercial and industrial. It's super low, which is why there's the.
I think this, where this rolls into this, that we talk about equity and we talk about.
Yeah.
So it is mainly affecting, you know, minority and low-income.
Yes.
And if we want to provide some kind of, then we have to look for ways.
Yeah.
Because, uh, what happens is it just gets gentrified.
Absolutely.
And that's, and that is a tool for gentrification is what it's become. So.
Hundred percent.
And one final question. Sorry, Mr. Chair, I had one final question, just more for confirmation. I was trying to find, did we say anything about here about not losing the units that come online due to, um, folks in a community that's not knowing about it, right? Like the rental units that are aligned for X amount of years or for sale units, they is more for sale than rental. They're on the market for ninety days and then they go back to market rate. And we've had another, enough conversation with Dr. Petheus sharing this, hey, how do we, how do we connect the community to those opportunities? Do we say anything about trying to keep the units that we get and not letting them slip away? If, if the answer, I couldn't find it, but if the answer is no, it might be worth touching on that. What can we do in this comprehensive plan to make sure that that piece is intact for housing? So, I feel like we lose a lot of units, so.
All right, moving on to any, any other comments on housing before we move to environmental stewardship? You get, you get on, um, Commissioner Clayburn's comment?
Yes, thank you.
All right, objectives, one through eight. Two. Great photographs.
I think four point eight in the, oh, I, I've gone on to the actions or whatever.
Go for it, keep this, keep this rolling.
Um, I think there's a mistake in four point eight or else I'm really dense.
On page nineteen.
Both could be true. It's, there's these two sentences and they don't seem to be related. Establish an educational program to promote dark sky best practices and awareness of lighting in the zoning ordinance. And then the next sentence says, increase county outreach to existing and new landowners on habitat protection.
Okay, yeah. Oh yeah, that's a four point nine, right?
I think that's what it's supposed to be. Cause they're not related.
Yeah.
Really, I, I tried to work how they could be, but. Okay, that's it. Okay.
Any other comments on the environmental stewardship?
I, there's a few things that I think are a little still too vague, but the staff can look at those comments themselves and ponder.
Pretty amazing chapter, it's got a lot of good stuff in it.
It doesn't have a salamander though.
Doesn't have a what?
Doesn't have one of our salamanders here. Got a lot of great pictures, but no salamander.
You want. With salamanders, two frogs and only, and no salamanders.
I want equity.
Well, you know, there's. Salamander equity, well, um, I know there's an organization that was monitoring the success of the salamander tunnels under Polo Grounds Road, and they had some really cool photos of the salamanders actually using the tunnels. So that, yeah, they exist, I saw them, that, you can Google it. So, uh, they might let us use one of those photos, because that's like, look, we, we made a wildlife tunnel, uh, and they're using it.
I'll check, um, just as a side note, uh, Scott Clark took the majority of the images in this chapter. So, he has a bunch of existing images and there may include one of the salamander, I'll see if they have it.
But I think that, I think the thing about like, not just a salamander, but yeah, using the tunnel, that's, makes the point like, hey, we, we've made it, uh, an attempt at this and it actually works.
Right.
That's good for public safety because people are running out in the road rescuing salamanders.
Yeah, Devon Floyd would be the person that has photographs.
Lunatic people.
All right, any other on the environment? I only had one that was, it, it, it's not a big deal, it just, um, it was two point one, action two point one. Update county ordinances and guidance documents to allow, encourage or require low-impact development to minimize the effects of unmitigated or unmanaged stormwater and increase the use of onsite stormwater management. What does that really mean relative to the Chesapeake Bay Act and other requirements of stormwater management?
Yeah. I was gonna say, it refers to the program of nutrient credits where you can buy those credits and essentially avoid, um, doing stormwater management on certain properties. And then have that done, yeah, to address water quality and have that instead done in other areas. It's, it's a tool for developers.
Yeah, we've used it, I'm just, um, I mean, I.
We could provide incentives, like for example, if you, if you treat, if you add bioswales to treat water quality on site, you get something.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's better to do it there instead of.
Well, we did it in Charlottesville, we gave a density bonus for small lots. Like if you could put four units on it, now you could put six, if you put the, at least two of a list of ten low-impact development tactic.
I see.
Quality, and developers really liked it.
Okay. So, so there's actually, um, there's a, a classification. So there's two kinds of buffers in the Chesapeake Bay Act, there's resource protection areas is basically what we have. And there's what's called resource management areas. And resource management areas have performance-based standards assigned to them. They, they overlay one another, the resource management areas are typically extend past the resource protection areas. But they can really be any size and anywhere we want, any area that we designate as a sensitive resource, as long as it's sort of connected to, to water quality. A lot of the communities that, that use these, um, have, part of this is that you can require low-impact development standards within the RMA. In fact, there are some examples in neighboring localities that I've, that I've shared with, um, with other people that, um, I think. Well, I, I can, I can send you some of the localities that use them, but they.
Yeah, those are more about that.
Yeah, they can establish a percentage of impervious surface, for example. Like you can set, you could say no more than X, X percentage can be impervious. Or you can say you must preserve X amount of tree cover. And I think it would be very useful for us, a locality, um, to, to have some of these standards, particularly in areas we know we have impaired streams or we know.
Have ma- the maximum lot coverage that you can't, you know, like you can't pave ninety percent, five percent of your lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for residential.
Got it.
Have that.
Yeah, the other thing that this would do too is that would help patch a hole that we currently have in our, um, in our apparent buffer ordinance, um, currently you can go and remove a stream entirely. Um, even with the proposed. Um, even with the proposed new new ordinance, you can come in. And just remove a stream. And then once the stream is gone, um you can put a parking lot there. And in fact, that is a real thing that's happening right now in Cozay. Now, if we had RMAs in place and the RMA basically correlated to this to this size of the stream buffer. They would at least have to abide by um. By performance standards, they we could say like you can't put a parking lot there. Um, so we could put some constraints, you know. So I I think it's something we should seriously look at as a county is adopting resource management areas. All right, great. Um, moving on to parks, recreation and open space.
But after. The next section was.
Environmental stewardship and then parks, rec and open space.
You're going, you're leaving. Environmental stewardship. I think I had one.
We're on uh PDF page one thirty.
It does, but I wanted, I just. Oh, yeah, I just like I just throw this out here. I I put this in my email. Sorry. Seven point three, page twenty one of the document. Or one twenty nine of the PDF. Anyway, this was an.
Environmental stewardship.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Seven point three is an example. Uh, I gave this in my email of a. Objective you could just. Lose because it doesn't really say anything. Support county staff in all departments to facilitate organization-wide and context-appropriate climate action. It's so vague as an action. You can't tell if you what is support? Good job. I don't know. I don't know what that means. And in the interest of. Yeah, I could just just lose that one because. Uh, well, you can. Write something else that's specific so you could tell if you did it, but you can't tell if you ever did that. What does support mean? Financial support, time to do it?
Point will take and I'm sure this is something that sort of came from another department. Maybe we got editorialized down. Thank you for.
Moving up. Okay, I left the chapter. In the parks.
Parks, rec and open space. Yes, so so first I'm gonna say that some of the revisions have been made since the last time we saw this are are really great.
Yeah, the parks staff did a lot of work since we last gave them feedback.
Um, page seventeen, um, I'll call out. I I like they we now have a tourism recreation section that calls out specifically that um one point three billion annual economic impact on the regional economy. Um, and that calls out the Shenandoah National Park and the Blueish Parkway. Um, so I I think there's and there's also some of the objectives in here are are very good if we go towards the towards the end here. Um, particularly um. Action items seven point one to seven point four. Um, I think there's some some options in there, I think, that could that that really will help us achieve more green space. Particularly um. Creating a new policy allows for voluntary donations from developers directly to Alamo County for the Parks Foundation to meet green space requirements. Um, then also encourage donations to County Parks Foundation. So I think. I think we've lacked a mechanism to fund things like greenways and trails and parks, except when a development is occurring.
As we get little pieces and bits.
Right, we got pieces and bits, and this this really helps. Start to address that problem. And so I think this is a really positive thing. I I really appreciate. What was done by by parks on this. The the only thing that I would say, um, and maybe it's in there and I I missed it, but. I think there could be some mention of the importance of private lands that offer low impact recreational activities. Um, there there are many um. There are many places in Alamo County where people are are providing, whether it's um Panorama Farm, whether it's Tevin Trails. Whether it's, you know, there's a lot of places. I don't think we need to call them out by name. Um, but there there, I guess I just did, didn't I? Um, but um, but I think that that there there's a lot of places in the in the county where there are these recreational activities occurring that that are. That are that are valuable. And even, you know, for that matter, people that offer their properties for hunting.
Well, let me let me throw this out as potential additional action, then we could also encourage participation. In the Division of Wildlife Resources, uh, Birding and Wildlife Trails Program. Um, other localities that I visited have more of those and what it is is a voluntary agreement by the landowner. That you can come on my land and go look at the red cockaded whatever over there. Um, and so it's private provided. Public open space. And that is a way there are um, and I won't call them out, but I know locations in the county. Where the landowner lets kayakers park there for free. On per- and to be just to be nice. Because they're great people, but you know, that's. We could that we could have more of those. The eastern shores, a lot of them, for example.
Right, any other parks, rec and open space comments?
I like all their greenways is one word.
Where where is that?
All throughout. Those are all my bubbles and that, just greenways is one word.
All right, moving us to cultural resources. Objective one through six. Is our dark dark sky comment?
I I did send the. Uh, staff uh who work on this uh kudos email because of. They did involve the starter preservation committee in editing. Um, and commenting. So there's a lot of input through that committee and I've and then they also did a great job of writing. The rationale for why we need these things and what other communities are doing that we haven't done. So I was really pleased with the chapter, so I have nothing to say.
Any other kudos or? Concerns? I I think it's well done. I'll just call it again as I had before. I think. I I realize that part of this was to write language generically. Um, you know, to encompass many different groups and but but I think that it would be worth calling out, you know. Our historic black communities and Alamo County. Because I think those. I think they they are. I think they're they're a. You know, there's. It has some special challenges that are going on now, particularly with declining populations and displacement that I think that we need to look at. Um, and and find ways to re- you know, reach out to those communities and see what help. Um, they would like us to provide or ways that we can help sustain um those communities. I had a similar comment and I'm happy to work with staff on any of this. We're doing a a lot of work with the descendants of enslaved communities. And we have a descending council that's helping with. Us, you know, there's two pictures of birdwood in here and that's what we're renovating along with. Guidance from the descendant council, so. I I agree a hundred percent. I think if we're gonna be talking about the history of the place and we're showing buildings that were built partially by enslaved labor, I think we need to. Have a section that talks about that.
I think you're talking also about just some of the the historic communities that we've had.
Yo, I see.
Some of those we're losing.
Yeah, I think.
Free town. We were talking about earlier.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's there's free towns or the places that I mean, I. I called that before. I think it's ironic that we have an action item related to protecting African-American cemeteries, but we don't have an action item. Related to protecting the African-Americans that still live in our rural area. So, I mean, you know, it it's nice. I mean, we should protect the cemeteries and we should protect the churches and structures, but I think we should also think about. What we can do to help sustain those communities that are already there and they do have some. They do have some challenges that perhaps we could, you know, the first step would be acknowledging their existence. Um, maybe even, you know, having a map, um, but i- ideally, it would be nice to have a map and the comprehensive plan. Um, but but then but then also, you know. And to reach out to those communities and and ask them what support and assistance would be beneficial to them, if any.
And re- and recognition.
And recognition. I mean.
Recognition markers for African-American and indigenous communities and put up. Three mark new markers in the past several years and wants. That program. And I think if you dig into some of the, so your points will take a line. Also, if you dig into some of these, it's it's a lot about being able to have good maps and interpretation and education and. So that we don't. We we have some staff with expertise in this area, but we don't provide them any, like I shouldn't say any, but we don't provide that. We don't have a program. We don't have the resources and support. Right now, so it does require funding by the Board of Supervisors. Actually give them the resources to do all this stuff. Not to mention, we don't have um. Requirements for present. We don't have a preservation ordinance, which it it gently refers to.
Any other um comments on cultural resources?
I'm I'm at the end of tracking reporting.
Community, there were two more, two more chapters to go. Community. Pardon me? Community facilities and infrastructure. Lots of objectives. Wondering have have folks from the school board looked at this?
There's a.
School staff, definitely. We've worked with several of the staff members of schools in the comp. And has the board looked at it?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, okay. I just, you know, I know that it's mentioned in here. This is where it's mentioned the most, right? Schools?
Yeah, I'm but I'm I the parallel I draw is like. I don't think the the board of the.
Yeah.
Oh, County Service Authority has reviewed the document in that regard type of thing. We we've worked with the staff.
Yeah, I see. Right, yes, got it. I got you. Good point. Okay.
The narrative text for schools is on page six of this chapter.
Well, I'll just make a really quick comment if I may. The only thing that I thought about with relation to schools that it doesn't really talk about. But I don't even think they would do it, so I didn't bother making this comment, but I'll just say it for the heck. We are, we have a lot of uh. Rules about how much land a school needs around it. And so then as we infill in the urban area, it becomes hard to find these ideal parcels with all this land. We talked about having an urban school within Southwood. I don't think that went anywhere. Um, I grew up in a school with playgrounds and some big oak trees, but it was just a couple of acres. We managed to grow up on it. So I'm just saying, we if we keep with this super suburban model with, you know, tens of acres for a school. Then we're not going to be able to have schools fitting into this dense new urban environment, so. I think at some point, school board needs to consider a different. Type of school building. That does not require so much land. Both for cost as well as just availability of land. So, but I I I feel like if I said this to the school board right now, they'd be like, no way, and that would be the end of the conversation, so. I don't think there's anyone realizing that. At this point, so I'm not even gonna bother to to just in action, but.
I had two thoughts.
Like a need.
Two thoughts. One is just repeating what I said before about um. Childcare. And the importance of childcare. And the other is early child childhood education and care. Um, I don't know if that's in here. Is also another critical need. And then out of school care also. Maybe that's a little too much in the weeds. So. I have one in here too. Um, so. So one thing that I would call out in this section about community facilities, I think that we should there should be more goal. I mean, there are some goals already, but I think we'd be more specific about. Um, goals related to sustainable design. Um, including the, uh, we should really, and Alamo County has in many ways. Often modeled the best practices we want the development community to adopt, I think, but we should codify that in there about low impact development. Um, the current comprehensive plan has a strategy to plant at least eighty percent native plants in county projects. That's very simple and it's very measurable and it should be in here too. Um, so I don't know why that was removed, but but certainly, and that that's gotten a lot of state recognition. So it would be nice to have have that in there as well as some standards about low impact development. As I said, we've done a good job, you know, you can look at um. Some of the, you know, whether it's the Cozay Library or other things that we've developed, you know, the.
Roof on this building.
How's that doing?
So so interestingly enough, I I took a tour. I don't want to go too far down this road.
Don't do it. We're running out of time.
Okay, yeah.
We can talk about it.
It's doing, it's 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 doing well.
Did well.
It's doing well, I'm glad. All right, any other comments or? Any other thoughts on implementation? There's a lot of a lot of objectives there.
And I wish we.
A lot of different infrastructure.
Yeah, and I just to point out, this chapter did receive some of the resilient community content. It was divided between this chapter and then uh. Environmental stewardship chapter. So some of the content did expand and then the number of objectives. But at the same time, the narrative text has been greatly reduced in this community facilities chapter, so it it is shorter in length.
Yeah, okay. Are we on our last chapter? Implementation?
On the last page.
Last one we did.
Yeah.
Yes, that's right, so. Said a lot about this not too long ago and I did read it and I was fine.
There was um one comment on. Number seven, and I assume everybody saw. Commissioner Moore's comments.
I did not.
Oh.
He just sent him this afternoon.
Yeah, I read. I did read it, actually.
Wasn't a lot of, not a lot of specific stuff, but bigger picture. Um, but there I did receive a comment on number seven, on the wording of. Number seven, just take this as. Uh, comes strengthen social connection. And community well-being. Um, let's see. All right, I'm bouncing back and forth.
Find Nathan's email or?
No, I it was another person.
You're looking at big move number seven.
Yeah, but I don't this, it's it's interesting. On page eight, it doesn't have number seven.
Right.
Oh, yours does. Mine doesn't.
Yeah, mine didn't either.
Oh, I only go up to six.
So good, you got that.
Ours doesn't have it. Ours goes to eleven.
What?
Eleven?
Got secret, you got secret moves.
Sorry, it was a joke. It's getting late.
That's you're gonna get a timeout.
Spinal tech.
So for what it's for what it's worth, um. Just on a number seven, there was a recommend, there was a suggestion that I received. That we add some of public schools to the list of investments. Also, um. I can't cross these two and look at them at the same time. The wording, what is the wording? Does it strengthen social connection, community? So I, another suggestion, strengthen social connection and community well-being. Number seven.
Here you go, right here.
Okay, sorry.
Strengthen social connection and community well-being was a recommend, the suggestion I received.
It's interesting, um, Mr. Missile, you know, we were talking about that today. I mean, the school stuff sort of come up. And um. You know, I was like, well, part of this is like, you know, if you start adding that, you could add all kinds of other infrastructure things. I think that the intent that we understood when. Um, Supervisor Gallaway brought this up. Was really talking about social capital.
Yeah.
As much as anything. And so. If the intent is to sort of add. Other things that may be more infrastructure related. And I take it schools in this regard is, I think that the comments I've sort of been hearing are more about like. Why do we still have trailers and, you know, overcrowding of facilities and things like that?
Okay.
Um, I might recommend that we. I mean, we'll do what you want, but I it seems like you'd be mixing apples and oranges there.
Okay. Let's get to that. And you have resilience. Yeah, okay.
But I did a nice job tying back to the guiding principles. So thanks for doing that. I think one thing you might just wanna think about as you're presenting this to the board is you have more like big moves in some areas than others, and so just justifying why that is. You know, I could look at this and say what there, if there were eight big moves, I expect to see two in each one of those categories. Doesn't mean you have to, but just be prepared to justify why you did what you did. So.
Thank you. All right, any other comments on implementation? We go into part, part four?
Yeah, just, the only thing I would say too is that in the, the big, the big move section, I encourage you to broaden number five, support development of agriculture and forestry uses in the rural area. I would, I'd also encourage you to include in there low-impact recreational uses.
Okay. Are we done with part three? Good. Any, we'll flip to part four, the appendix. Any comments on the appendix?
I'm just confirming these items will be linked in the appendix, the, the end goal, like some of the things that are referenced will be linked or.
Yeah. Especially for internal documents. Again, I just wanna try to emphasize external documentation. I think we're gonna make a call not to link those ones. Right, guys?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Cores, I'll have a microphone, please.
Mike, sir.
Looking at this. Mike?
Mike.
And page thirteen. You actually do have a, a title for that graph that, that is in the, in part one.
There's also kind of a little subgraph on page sixteen that's kind of interesting too, that's similar, but talks about housing unit types by comp plan year. All right, any other comments on any of the appendices? All right. Great work, staff. Is there anything we need to, anything else we need to talk about on this subject? No?
No, thank you so very much for your, your guidance, your input.
All right. Uh, let's see. Getting late. So any committee, I think we're done with the work session then, right? Are we good? Are you all, everybody's good?
Thank you for the good job.
In, in all seriousness, thank you, guys. I mean, I realize how much work this is for you all. We gave you this, what, two weeks back, three weeks back? And the dedication that you guys took to go through the stuff. All the editing, we appreciate. And I think it's gonna be a good document. I think it'll be very useful for us. And you all played a very large role in that.
It's gonna be interesting to see next steps once this is adopted and to understand whether the resources are there to actually achieve those next steps. So that's actually, when you go talk about this to the board, I would, as, I mean, I don't know, I, maybe it's not your role, but I would just think about how that's communicated and what the, the thoughts are there.
And I'll just, along those lines, there are things like dark skies with it, we're in the comp plan when I joined the commission eight hundred years ago. So I just think that we should maybe put some extra to the board, some emphasis on things that we haven't yet done that continue to be a top priority, and let's go ahead and do it this time. And not have dark skies update ordinance show up in AC seventy-two or whatever it is.
Whatever it says.
All right.
Just my plea.
Any, we're onto item number five, any committee reports? My committee was actually part of the review of the plan last week, so that was good to be part of.
Car broke down and I had to bike off.
So, any other community reports?
Did not meet no quarrels.
So, so I do have, I do have one from MPO Tech. So so the MPO Tech meeting, MPO Tech met on August fifth. Some things we discussed with the transportation demand management study. And I'm glad to say they're gonna be including Strava, Strava Metro data, they have an account to that, and Streetlight. So that'll give us some objective data on pedestrians, which, as you know, I've been advocating that for a very long time. There also, there's also gonna be a joint meeting that they're, that's, that's happening with Stanton and Waynesboro to talk about transportation. Oh, the, unfortunately, the Ravanda Pedestrian Bridge is, Ravanda Pedestrian Bridge is not funded. That's a sad, sad face.
I'm sorry, Lonnie, where is that physically going? But was, you're saying it's not funded? Where was it supposed to go?
The Woolen Mills one.
Woolen Mills, yeah.
Woolen Mills, that was supposed, supposed to be.
Like Woolen Mills, the sort of, the Suntara Hospital area.
Ah, okay. That's too bad.
Yeah, it is, it is too bad.
Anything else, Lonnie?
No, that's it right now.
All right, awesome. Any other reports? No? Mr. Barnes, report of the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Yes, thank you so much. Again, I've told some of you all, say it more publicly here. We, of course, didn't hold the last meeting in, in July, nor the first one in August. We had a bit of a lull in the submittal of rezonings, especially for permits last quarter of last year, and I think that's why you sort of see this little gap. I know that Carolyn sent you something today for our next two months, and you'll see that we have quite a full schedule, and I anticipate that full schedule of meetings for the remainder of the year at least. So side note there, and because of that gap, I have quite a few things to bring to your attention. Our last meeting was July eighth. The board held a meeting on July sixteenth. They reviewed, approved the Spring Hill subdivision over in Ivy. They also reviewed the commercial solar ordinance and adopted that one as well. Then the beginning of August, on August sixth, staff took to them proposal for the Free Bridge Lane discontinuance. Free Bridge Lane is pedestrian corridor between Dart and Tower, running downstream to Free Bridge. The board indicated we should move forward, so we're in a process of trying to get that permanently closed. So that's interesting and good. On the sixth, they also had a work session on data centers, the part two, which is not only about performance standards. You recall, the part one was just to get something in place and less than forty thousand square feet, and this was significantly larger with different tiers of permitted center, data centers, as well as performance standards for noise and water and several other setbacks and things like that. That also was accompanied with a text amendment, I mean, a zoning map amendment to create an overlay district. Essentially looking at several different industrial properties either designated in the comp plan or zoned in our community. And that was quite a discussion that the board had on that. To your point, Mr. Clayborne, we are scheduled to come back on October fourteenth with a public hearing on those, on that information to you all, as a follow-up from the board. On the sixth, they also talked about the forest school, so you know, you can remember that was quite the discussion we had here. It was similar with the, the board. Again, your staff was worried with the Dudley Mountain, and that was quite a considerable part of the discussion at the board to, eventually they, they moved to vote approval for that request. Moving on, on August thirteenth, the board and the Economic Development Authority held a joint meeting. Was on, talking about the Economic Development Strategic Plan. It was an interesting conversation between those boards. And then finally, on eight twenty, there was not actually a whole lot of stuff for planning kind of related type of thing. I think the same sort of whatever, I will prognosticate why they didn't have those on there, but to say though they did do is have a work session on the repair and buffer standards, draft ordinance is another thing that we'll be bringing to you all for a public hearing soon. You recall, we had a public hearing, I mean, we had a work session with you all many months ago, and that was a continuation from that, taking that to the board. So that'll be coming to you hopefully soon for a public hearing.
Ask a question back on the data center.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that we'd be having a public hearing as a next step for the planning commission?
Yes.
So we, we don't have a work session on that?
The decision was made to take that as a work session to the board first.
But that, that means that we can't have a work session ourselves? Already gone to the board for a work session? I just didn't.
I mean, it was kind of, yeah.
Okay. I didn't know that was just, I mean, I remember that ever happened.
I think there was a it was, you know, it was a decision to try and move this thing along expeditiously to try to deal with the data center issues that we face as a community.
Just a huge jump from forty to five hundred thousand square feet. That's just interesting.
It is definitely, I, I think I can say this honestly, generated quite a, a lot of discussion in the community from different quadrants.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Any new business, old business, or items for follow-up? I grouped those last together. Well, all right, with that, we are adjourned to September ninth at six P M. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.